Good evening. Good evening. I want to welcome you all to the April 27, 2022 Meeting of Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. We thank all who've joined us this evening and we're going to make some brief announcements. We'll get started. I know we have a number of off agenda speakers and certainly we'll get to those. What do we have? Okay, very good. Sound like dwarfs, okay. All right, very good. Anyway, we'll get started in just a moment. Want to call the meeting order again, as I said, welcome all of you this evening. And we've got a number of items on the agenda as well as our off agenda items and we will work down through those with public testimony here in just a moment. So Flo, I'll turn to you to go ahead and call the roll, establish a quorum, make the announcements, and then we'll get started.
Okay, good evening. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond?
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, May 1st at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed toward any meeting participant. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, masks or shields is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required, and seating is limited and available on a first come, first served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call for off agenda matters, and when the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium to make your comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your public comments. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item, and you may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the meeting record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff or assistance, or you can contact us at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. And that concludes my announcements.
Great. Thank you Flo. Supervisor Kennedy, would you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, please? Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so under our agenda, we're going to go to our off agenda comments. I don't know if we have folks on the line, but I know we have a number of folks here in the chambers this evening, and so I have a stack of speaker request forms, and I'll give those, call those anywhere they were given to me, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just observation before, before we begin tonight, and my colleague to my left, Ms. Frost leaned over and made a very interesting observation. I couldn't help but agree that this is as full as we've seen these chambers in more than two and a half years. So it's a good.
Well, some mask. Okay, thanks Ted. And by the way, with the Pledge of Allegiance, again, that was, you know, the most voices we've had too, so again, thank you all for participating. So, okay, with that then, let's go to our off agenda speakers, and I'll call three in a row so folks can be in a queue. So I have Janet Bragg, followed by James Starr, followed by Paula Brown, so, and we'll get started, so. Janet, you're first.
Good afternoon.
Good af, well, good evening, I think, but we'll take afternoon.
Good afternoon. So I'm here today, I don't have them on me, I was looking for two pennies, because the two pennies that I would give you would be the two pennies that you are wanting to raise each and every one of us per dollar. And inflation has went up drastically in the last few years, as you have all known. Cost of food, cost of gas alone has went up. It is ridiculous. And for us to live on our wages and only get a 2% increase, that's two pennies on every dollar, that, that won't even buy us a piece of candy. It may be used to in the 50s, but it won't buy us nothing. And we don't have the money to do that, and we make too much to get any assistance. I'm going to be honest, I owe on my electric bill, I owe on my gas bill, I'm behind on my car payments, I've had to make a decision on am I going to buy food for my children or am I going to pay this? I've been making my house payments, barely, because I've been putting electricity, worrying about electricity getting turned off, or the gas getting turned off to keep my kids warm. And I'm a mother, and my husband is disabled, and I work every day, even though I am disabled, I work and I help people who are less fortunate. And I know that I am more fortunate than them, but I can't make it off of this money. It can't. If you go look at clothing, go look at anything, I have two kids in school, two high schoolers. I don't have money to buy them anything, and I'm not going to go get the free things because I know there are people less fortunate than me. But I'm, and then this about, I lost my father in October. I took off for him. Thank God I have my mom still alive, but you're wanting to reduce it? If my mom was to die and my dad, because my dad, how am I going to take off for her? If you're not going to let us take off or give us paid time off for both parents, or say a brother or a sister, we're losing people by the dozens from this COVID. And you got cancer, my father died of cancer, and I'm just telling you, it, this, we can't afford this. 2% is not enough for us. We work with people, we help people. We might not be nurses, and we might not be teachers, but we're still working in people's lives. We're social workers in here, welfare workers in here, and we're helping the people first line, and we deserve something better than 2%.
Thank you Janet. Good evening, James.
Hi Don. Members of the Board of Supervisors, greetings from the employees who serve the community. My name is James Starr. I'm the Chair of UPE and a member of the 008 UPE Bargaining Team, and for what it's worth, I've worked for the county since 1985.
Thank you.
It would have been nice to start out by saying good evening, but I can't because it isn't. We didn't want to be here tonight, but we had to come because we have a message. Contract negotiations started in January, and here we are in late April, almost May, and there's still no contract. Inflation is out of control, and Sacramento County can't recruit enough people to fill hundreds of vacancies, in my department alone, DHA, and those you can recruit, they're not staying. But your county negotiators have not brought enough money to, to the table to keep even with inflation, let alone provide any incentive to stay with the county and make it a career as I have done. The people you see here tonight served the community through the worst pandemic in 100 years, but we don't feel our service is valued. Most of us are doing the work of two people because there aren't enough employees to do the work. We're tired of the overwhelming workload, we're tired of working overtime, and if your managers were to be honest with you, they'd have to admit that overtime is all that's keeping county services running, and that their employees are completely burned out. And county pay doesn't buy what it used to, not at the grocery store, not at the gas pump. We're not making it. This can't go on, and it won't go on. If your negotiators are telling you that we won't strike for a livable wage that truly supports our families, then they're wrong. Listen, they're wrong, because we will strike if we have to, if you make us, we'll strike. That's our message tonight. Are you listening?
Thank you.
My name is Paula.
Hi Paula.
I'm with the county for 22 years. I am proud to be an county employee. I am in good standing, I do my job, I do it well. When you mentioned at the beginning that this has been the most that you've had in your auditorium, we've still been here. We've had to learn how to do the job differently to make sure your constituents had benefits to be okay, because we know this pandemic put many families out of work and in desperation, and we remained here. We figured out how to be parents, we figured out how to be teachers, we figured out how to be employees to get our job done. We did it well. I am saddened and disgusted that you sent somebody to our negotiation table that did not come willing to negotiate a fair deal. He shamefully came with the 2%. 2% doesn't even touch our rent, our gas bill, our rent increase. Please have a conversation with your negotiator and have him come to the table with more power and more wisdom to do negotiations. And I love the fact that you're wearing red, and I know that's in support of us, and I know. You'll talk with the negotiator to come to the table and do a fair contract, and I leave you with that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you Paula. Okay, and next we have Sarah Singleton, Sarah's followed by Janine Lopez, followed by Beverly Kearney.
I wish I had the wardrobe memo, you know?
A little rain down.
2XL.
Hello Sarah.
Hi. Hi again. I'm back here to talk about this negotiations. It hasn't gotten better, obviously. I asked you guys last time to really think about what's happening and talk to your negotiator about making a fair deal with us. Obviously, that didn't happen. I think you're going to have a lot of people talking to you about the inadequate cost of living increase proposal, so I will move on to something else. Another proposal we received had to do with social worker pay. You guys know, we are, our staffing is very poor all over DC FAS, and what was proposed to us was that master's degree social workers would have a hold on their pay. They wouldn't get another raise until the other social worker classes, oops, sorry, caught up to them. They weren't proposing any increases for human service social workers, and future master's degree social workers would make approximately $4 an hour less than the current social workers. So somebody in my age bracket will never have another raise, never. That's what they're proposing. You have retention issues. They flatly refuse to consider another retention incentive for us. We're drowning, we're drowning. So, you know, talk to this guy, this Mr. Jarvis. I mean, I don't even know if you guys knew that that proposal was out there. It's ridiculous, it really is, so, anyway, hope to not see you again here, but.
Thank you Sarah. We have Janine Beverley, and then Keisha Brown is the next, or Brand, excuse me.
Hi there.
Hi Janine.
I'm Janine, I've spoken before to the Board of Supervisors, and I'm here today because what is going on at the negotiations table on behalf of the county is absolutely disgusting and atrocious. It is atrocious, and I am sadly disappointed in our county executive as the former deputy or the former director of DHHS and DHA, that you would allow them to come to your old stomping ground and basically crap on us. Because throughout COVID, we have fought for essential worker status. We had to go and buy our own PPE. We had to provide that. I had to reach out on social media to you Phil, to come and deliver PPE to emergency response social workers, because unlike probation and law enforcement, we still were mandated to go into the houses and check on families. We were still mandated to go out and check on these families, monthly visits, weekly visits, two times a week visits, 24 hours a day, we were running an agency, and we were running an agency on the backs of these people here. We were keeping children safe, we were keeping families fed, we were trying to keep people housed. I have a sign back there that says, "I will work for a fair wage," because all we ever hear about is the homeless situation. How many of your employees are going to be homeless? It is despicable and disgusting that the people that were servicing this county the most during COVID had to actually come and negotiate ARPA? That we had to get that because your former executive took all of the money for the CARES Act and gave it to other people who weren't even going into homes? And yet, what's even more despicable is the fact that the people that weren't even responding during COVID, like probation got a 10% increase? Got a 10% raise? They got to monitor probationers from home. We were in homes, oftentimes with delayed response from law enforcement, conducting investigations for child support or checking on the welfare of the elderly, the disabled, your most vulnerable populations. I've worked for this county for 18 and a half years. I am in the master's program right now, after 18 and a half years as a human services social worker in CPS, okay? I am not going to take a pay cut when I get my master's degree. Because what I'm going to do is if that is the case, I won't even become a master's degree social worker in this county. I'll become a manager or director, because that's the only way change is going to happen. When these people that are in the front lines start to make changes, instead of people that have never been on the line. People so far removed from the community in which they live, that they're supposed to be servicing, because they live in areas like Granite Bay, or El Dorado Hills, or Roseville, Rockland, instead of actually with the people that you are supposed to be serving and supporting. And right now, you have a lot of workers that are not supported. You have a lot of workers that had to fight to be essential. You had a lot of workers that were doing the job when no one else wanted to go do it. So you need to remember that, because if you think we didn't learn from SCTA, we learned a lot from SCTA. And if you notice, we've got another union with us. So then, I beg the question, who's going to do all your social work duties when we are not there and they are not there? Is it going to be them?
Okay, thanks. Hi Beverly, Beverley, and Keisha.
Hi, I'm Beverly Kearney. We got the OG lineup right here happening, so I have been a master's level social worker with Sacramento County CPS for 22 years. In that time, I was on the Board for majority of those years, so I've been through numerous negotiation cycles, and this weird thing happens every time we negotiate where there's just no money anywhere in the county. There was no money in 2006, there was no money in 2010. I haven't had a raise since 2012, except for a COLA. I am one of those master's degree level social workers that now you want to try to phase out. So who's going to come in and bring that knowledge? Who's going to meet those federal guidelines that you have to maintain a certain percentage of master's degree level social workers in any child protection agency? So let's talk about, let's talk about the last two years, which is nothing like any of us have ever seen. And while I am beyond grateful for the two bottles of hand sanitizer that I received in two and a half years, that smelled terrible, by the way, and the five N95 masks that we just got in February, I want to say, four months. I am a very high risk individual for COVID. My doctor told me I probably would not survive, and when I was talking with management and HR about how to stay safe and going back into the field and made a joke about just trying not to die, I was told I was being dramatic. So maybe it's a little dramatic, but death is not something I'm excited about. I rotated three N95 masks, four months, four months, because we had nothing, other than driving into our offices every day to pick up one paper mask to see multiple families in a day. So not only are we spreading germs, we're not protecting ourselves, we got nothing. Oh, I'm sorry, I also got two face shields from the county. I don't, I don't want to forget that. We went out there every single day in homes, in hospitals. We go out, and while I respect and admire our law enforcement partners, they go out on a DV, they arrest the perpetrator, we're out there 24 hours later. There's no protection for us. I have an iPhone 10, a pen, and a clipboard. Nobody is coming to save me. At least they get protection. We have nothing. We have lived the last two years, two and a half years, I don't even know anymore, in fear, literally every day. Fear of contracting COVID, fear of bringing it home to our families, fear of, fear of giving it to our children, our loved ones, our elderly. I got COVID from a client. I spent eight hours in the ER the night I got it, and do you know what I got from the county? Have you attended any large events in the last two weeks? No! I'm high risk, I mask, I sanitize, I have spent well over the $3,000 in ARPA funds I'm going to get in PPE for myself, because I needed to be protected. My partner would not let me leave our house for the first three months of this pandemic. This is not a joke, and for you to come with 2% is beyond, beyond absurd. We are here, we are fighting, I have 22 years, I don't know if I'll make it to 23, because this is not worth it. We cannot survive, we cannot support our families, we should not be scraping money together, we should not have to work overtime to pay our bills. I know I'm overtime, but bear with me.
Sure.
There's literally no way, I can't even get paid my mileage for three months. It costs me $120 to fill up my car, and I can't take a county car because there's not enough of those. Nobody cares about social workers, family service workers, our clerical staff is in the office every day. In the month that the county made us go back to the office in July, I think it was July, we had 25 or 30 positive cases throughout all of our buildings. The months before, we'd had five. There is no way, it is about time, I am tired of year after year after year, this county not respecting or valuing its workers that are out there. We are essential workers. The Department of Sanitation down the street from my office has a sign that says, "Heroes work here." You know what we have?
Nothing.
Nothing. Not a thing. Nobody says anything, nobody talks about us, nobody's advocating for us with the state legislature, except for us, except for our union, except for what we're doing ourselves. This is not okay, we don't get recognized. I don't need a 15-minute video from managers on Social Worker Appreciation Month, I need less cases, I need less, I need more time to do the work I have, I need you to hire people that you can't hire because we are underpaying. The workload.
Deborah, I need you.
Almost, yeah. The workload in Sacramento County is three to four times that of every other county doing our jobs, and we say that consistently, year after year after year. It's time for a change, we need money in our pockets, we need better working conditions, and we need the people around this county who are making the rules and decisions to actually give a damn.
We have Keisha, then Kimberly West, and then Priscilla Cochran Navarro.
I'm Kiki Brand, working for the Department of Human Assistance, one of your clerical, and I say one of yours because we work for you. We're your frontline, everybody in here, your frontline who have kept your district yours, yours, and yours, and yours, and you such a disappointment, because all of your districts have been safe because of us. Carried all of them, took care of their families. You say compassion, where's ours? Integrity, where's yours? You want us to trust you. We can't at all. Be innovative, how you tell us, come with more than that 2 and 3%, because it's not going to help us. It's a slap in our face, it's a spit in our face, because essential workers, hazardous workers, it's what you called us in many emails, and I will show you, many. You are very, very condescending in emails. Go home, take care of your families, as you tell us now. 2 and 3% will not do that at all. You over here telling us now, one person could die in your family for five days. I just lost my dad, and because he had the title of stepdad, I could not grieve him. Okay? I have a husband, I have children, I have grandchildren, so you want me to choose? You're disrespectful. You don't care about us, but you want us to care about communities out here. You want us to care about the refugees that we have to take care of, whether they come from anywhere else, we do not know where they come from, who they associated with, but you want us in these offices. You want us to take our lives and put at risk, my family's life and put at risk, but yet you don't want to pay me to do it. And that's you don't want to say anything, when you know that we kept you looking in the good, okay? Two and a half years, we kept you looking great, all of you. I want not just myself, but every family in here compensated for the jobs that they do.
Okay, next we have Kimberly, then Priscilla, and then Ted.
Hi everyone, thank you. Hi, my name is Kimberly West. I work at a welfare office on 24th and Florin, Suzie Kane Mitchell, Z100, and we work in Meadowview, essentially, we work in underserved population, so I have the, the honor and the privilege of being in the community every day, and it's stressful. So when the pandemic hit, I asked my program manager, I asked my executive director, like, what's going to happen, what are we going to do? And as with like everyone else, no one really knew, and then you sent us home and like had us get doctor's notes, and then you told us to come back and bring our butts back into the office, right? And my doctor's note said that I probably shouldn't be there, because I am high risk if I get COVID. And I came to work, and I got COVID at work, while on the job, during an outbreak, and now I have long-term COVID, which means since January of 2021, I have been dealing with the side effects of this disease, and it's incredibly unknown. I'm not able to work full-time at this, right now, and what Sacramento County is telling me is that they don't agree with what my medical professional is saying about my health, and that they want to probably just make me medically retire. I came to work and I served, I've been here for 14 years, and right now, because I got an unknown disease while doing my job, I might not have any employment anymore. That's really messed up. I go to work every day that I can, I continue to put myself at risk to get COVID once again, and I do it to serve the community that I work in, but I, I don't work for an employer who values me, and, and that's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking to know that I have literally, literally put my life on the line. And it's incredibly unknown. I'm not able to work full-time at this, right now. And what Sacramento County is telling me is that they don't agree with what my medical professional is saying about my health, and that they want to probably just make me medically retire. I came to work and I served. I've been here for 14 years. And right now, because I got an unknown disease while doing my job, I might not have any employment anymore. That's really messed up. I go to work every day that I can. I continue to put myself at risk to get COVID once again, and I do it to serve the community that I work in. But I, I don't work for an employer who values me. And, and that's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking to know that I have literally, literally put my life on the line. And y'all don't care. I don't know what happens if I get COVID again. No one knows. I really hope I don't find out. So before I go, it is only appropriate that I, as a black femme, stand here and say that if Sacramento County doesn't consider giving us Juneteenth off, I don't know what your problem is. Sacramento County failed, failed to show up during the political uprising that we had. But see what it is? It's not a political uprising. What it is, is what continues to happen in our country day in and day out. It is a sign of the times that we have not made any kind of progress in regards to equal rights in this country, and definitely within Sacramento County. Because what I can stand here and tell you from my own experience is that Sacramento County continues to practice anti-blackness as well as misogynoir. So if you do not do the appropriate thing and at least honor the black people who work for you because they don't work here, we work out here! It would only be appropriate to give us Juneteenth off. Thank you.
Priscilla, Ted, and then...
Hi, everyone.
Yeah, Latia. Hi.
My name is Priscilla Cochran Navarro, and I'm here today speaking on the behalf of the family service workers that serve DCFAS. I've been employed with Sac County for 12 years. I want to address the economic importance of why we are here demanding a fair, livable COLA increase that far exceeds the drastically insufficient 2% the county has suggested. In February of this year, the Wall Street Journal found that US inflation is higher than it's been in 40 years, that's four decades. I want to break down some numbers so we can all better understand the information I will be sharing this evening. As a family service worker, we top out at a maximum pay of $22.74. 2% of that equals 45 cents. At 160 hours a month, that totals an additional $72 added to our checks at months in. I want everyone here to remember the number 72, everyone keep that in your mind. Okay, in January of last year, employees of Sacramento County had their contributions toward Kaiser Permanente's HMO health benefits increased from $630 a month to $780.68 a month, which is a difference of $150. Okay? That's a 21% jump. Now let's go back to the number we talked about earlier, 72. 150 minus 72 equals $78, which means that the suggested COLA amount doesn't even cover the difference, leaving us in the red of $6. That's just benefits alone. The last two years have brought unprecedented added life stressors, and none of us can afford to leave our current health providers and get potentially substandard care for our physical and mental health needs for ourselves and for our families. Lastly, by a show of hands, how many people drove here this evening? Everyone. Board, raise your hand if you drove here. None of you drove here? I find that hard to believe. Okay. Okay. AAA concluded that at the beginning of this year, the cost of regular unleaded gas was a staggering $5.67. At the same time last year, we were paying approximately $3.77 in the pumps here in Sacramento County. That's a 40% increase, 40%. Okay? It's simple, you guys, numbers don't lie. And just to kind of bring it all back, the last four weeks, that's two paychecks, I've worked over 100 hours of overtime. 100 hours. I work day, I work night, I'm in the hospitals, I'm out with law enforcement, you name it, I'm there. We, we do go into homes, we do everything. And if I'm working over 102 hours of overtime, that's just overtime, and I'm barely making it. And I'm sure a lot of people here aren't workhorses like I am, but we are struggling. And if I, you know, someone mentioned earlier about choosing to pay this or choosing to pay that. What we're doing, we are drowning. Our own families are drowning, his families, his, all of us, we're drowning with no, no lifeline to be seen. And that's what we need. We need something that's fair, and we need something that's livable. Thank you.
Following Ted, then we have, I think it's Latoya or Latia, and then Seth Alexander.
Supervisor, if I can respectfully ask my members to speak before I do?
Oh, sure, that's fine. Yeah, I took this just the way they were handed to me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll hold Ted. So is, is Latoya, Latia?
Latoya.
Latoya, okay, Latoya, and then Seth Alexander, and then I have Stephanie McCall and Ryan Harris.
Hello.
Hi.
Sitting here, I realized the last time I was here was four years ago for my new employee orientation. And I was so excited, I said, I'm on with the county, I'm going to elevate, I'm going to be able to take care of my family, my college education is finally going to pay off. Now coming back here, I don't know if I'm going to be able to make it another four years because I, I can't afford it. I have a family, and that's why I come in every day. And I try to do it with a smile. The main job role that I have is supervising visits. And I'm pretty sure everybody heard, February 28, 2022, Nathaniel Kong was violently murdered in the Arden area while doing what I do daily, what all me and all my coworkers do daily. National news outlets were updating us on all the details, and we were texting each other, trying to figure out who, what, who is it? Is everybody okay? What happened? We had no idea. And the only response we got from the county was, it wasn't a DCFAS employee, but it could have been. He died doing the same thing that we do every single day, and we do it for pennies. If you're going to have me do a job that's so dangerous yet important, can you at least compensate me? Can you at least make sure that I can pay my rent? Pay for my child's sports? Make sure that he has updated clothing? Usually when a job is dangerous, you're paid a differential. We don't get offered that. We get a cap at $22.74, and there's no hope for anything else. We take threats from clients, from the public, we endure secondhand trauma, we go home to our own families and pray that we can keep ourselves together enough to keep that flowing in a positive manner. What you're giving us is insufficient, and it's sad. Today I looked up and saw that in February, you guys got your salaries increased to $123,000 a year. That's a third, that's a third of what I get paid. And I'm not saying that you don't deserve it, but I am saying, every day I come here, I do my best. I service these communities, we service these communities, and we deserve a change today. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Trump. Okay, Seth Alexander, Ryan Harris, and Stephanie McCall, and then Ted Semer. Hi, Seth.
Hi. I brought t-shirts for everybody. If you want to wear them like Phil, that's great. If you don't, I ask that you just keep it and remember what you heard here tonight. I can't add too much to what the workers have said, I'm not one of them, I just represent them, but I do want to add something that happened at the 008 table. We made a proposal asking for essential worker pay in a future pandemic, asking for a guarantee of personal protective equipment. We asked for the county to agree to meet with us when something like that would occur so we could work out details and ensure that our workers have what we need and they need in order to do their jobs, so they don't end up with two bottles of hand sanitizer and five masks, that they get what they need so they're safe. The county's response to this was that our proposal was tone-deaf. Tone-deaf? I can't, I can't, tone-deaf? Tone-deaf is thinking that these workers don't deserve a fair and livable wage. Tone-deaf is thinking that they've been safe during this pandemic, they haven't. Every day they're getting noticed of people getting sick in their offices, going out in the field still, coming to the office still, making this county run. And tone-deaf? That's what the county said our proposal was. Because we're asking for our workers to get the pay that they deserve and the protections that I think all of us deserve. It's not right. The county needs to recognize what these workers do for them every single day. Every day, they do it. They do it seven days a week, they do it at night, they do it in the morning, every goddamn day they're doing it to make you guys look good, and you're not respecting them. Your negotiators are certainly not respecting them, and you, they work for you. And they tell us at the table that that's all they can do because that's all you've given them. So here we are. I got your shirts.
It's a very comfortable shirt, by the way.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Stephanie McCall. I'm an employee of the Sacramento Department of Human Assistance. I work for, I am a human services specialist. I administer benefits for our most vulnerable community, CalFresh benefits, food stamps, Medi-Cal, all of the things that people need to survive. It is also my great honor and privilege to act as the chair of the 008 governing board. But tonight I'm also here as a member, an employee, a mother, a wife, and a human being. Forgive me for being a little emotional, what my coworkers have said tonight was all true, and it's stuff that I hear every single day as the chair of our board. I've been at the table with the county for the last two months plus. It has been disappointing, to say the least, saddening, so sad. The person that you hired, Ann, he is incredibly disrespectful. He has insulted us, he's insulted our board, he insults our members, he insults UPE directly with no shame, proudly stating that he represents this county for negotiations. He should be ashamed, but he isn't. The only thing that we can assume is that this is the way you feel about us, that this is the way you feel about these people who serve your communities hard, well. We have enviable customer service. Ann, one of her most important priorities when she was our director was customer service, respect, doing the job when it's hard. We do the job, and it is hard. It's hard, it's very hard. But we do it with pride, we do it with dignity, we treat these people with the respect that they deserve. And we go home at night and we struggle, and we worry, and we have anxiety, and we get up and we do it the next day. But we, all we really want is to feed our families, to have a better future for our kids than we may have had. I know for me personally, I want my children to be, to flourish, to go to college, to be dreamers, to live the best life they can live, which I was not afforded as, as a child growing up. So here I am, working for you, doing the best that I can, trying to make ends meet, and trying to implore you to understand. I don't think I could have said any better than anybody said tonight, honestly. I've been moved to tears several times tonight because these stories are, are so true, I can't emphasize that to you enough, that what you're hearing tonight is not rhetoric.
Stephanie, can I just ask you a question? So could you give an example of how you were insulted at the table? Just, just one, I don't need a bunch.
Yeah. I can give you many examples.
Just give me one example.
One of the first, the first day we negotiated with Mr. Jarvis, we asked for clarification on a proposal that the county was making as to how they would like to treat people, transfer people at their will, wherever they wanted to, if they had been counseled. We wanted a clear definition of what counsel meant to Mr. Jarvis. So we asked, what is your, what do you mean by, can you clarify, what do you mean by counsel? His response was, is counsel a new word to you? Do you not know the definition of counsel? Because that's a pretty common word that most people understand. That was his response. And that has continued to be his jabs and responses throughout the entire negotiation. They've gotten worse, as a matter of fact.
Okay, I appreciate the example.
Yeah, it's, it's horrible. And we have maintained professionalism to the best that we were able. I will admit I've lost it a couple times with him.
Okay.
Okay, I have. I can only thank so much. Because these are the folks that I'm up there representing, and they don't deserve that. They do not deserve that. I'm going to close with, with a saying from a very great man, Mr. Cesar Chavez, being of service is not enough. You must become a servant of the people. When you do, you can demand their commitment in return. I'm asking for you, your commitment, for all of your commitment. We are public servants, it's what we do, we do it with pride, we love our jobs, we don't
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm in the queue.
I'm sure, Mr. Serna, go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up on your question, I think it's a real important one. So much so that I don't think we should just take what we heard tonight. I think, I'd like to know a lot more about the history of purported insults and condescension at the bargaining table. So regardless of the context of why everyone's here tonight, for the long term, I think it would benefit this board, benefit the CEO's office, if we had some follow-up correspondence from UP's leadership that tells us even more stories and examples of the disrespect and the insults that are being claimed. Because that is, that's a systemic problem that we need to address. Well, I was, I was looking for like a follow-up letter of some sort that kind of documents that for me, Ted.
Okay, so, all right, thank you, Mr. Serna, so it looks like we'll receive some additional documentation behind that. So I have a couple of more speaker slips, because I don't know if they're part of the same group here, so we'll be sure, I have Ryan Harris, Kim, is it McWest?
Kim M-West.
Okay, Kim M-West, and, and then Mac Wilson. So, and then Ted Semer, I'd ask to speak after all of his memberships. So I have Ryan, Kim, and Mac. Good evening, Ryan.
So I actually had some totally different plan for tonight, but as I've been in here multiple times, many of you know that I used to work for this very department right behind me. So I'm going to go ahead and get off a topic about what I wanted to say, because I definitely support the reason why they're here, I just support the things that they say, including such statements as Ethan Die is trash. Nonetheless, I heard earlier that there are some individuals in here that have their master's degree and they're master's degree workers, so I do want to give a round of applause for those individuals that are here. Maybe understanding their frustrations is a little bit harder to see, given the director of their department, Ethan Die does not even have a master's degree. Nonetheless, while I was working for this department, I do want to say while I was working there during the COVID time, it did hurt to see that we weren't supplied accurately. We didn't have gloves, we didn't have masks, we didn't have hand sanitizers, but we were considered essential workers, and you guys still wanted us there every day. With that said, when I brought this up to my department, I was kind of ostracized by the program manager, as well as the director, and many of others. The good news about that is that my specific bureau did receive a deep cleaning, and I'm very grateful for that. Nonetheless, I'm not sure if that deep cleaning applied to all the departments, which it very well should, because they're all deserving of that type of treatment, if not more so deserving. I'm not sure how many times you guys have had this room cleaned, but I guarantee it doesn't get used or it doesn't get as dirty as what they go through. With that said, you know, our city values was touched on, that is something that Ann here brought up, and within city values is integrity. That's one I'd really like you to stand strong on as you take that deep breath, Ann. Integrity is something that I continue to ask you guys to uphold. I know I try my best to uphold it on my end, I sleep lovely at night, that's why I'm here every Tuesday that you guys have your meetings. Kenny Patrick, I'll be playing the video that you sent me through later on when you guys touch on number one in here, but maybe you don't sleep so well, that's why you missed that previous meeting, I'm not too sure. With that said, while I do have these individuals here behind me that I used to work with, I would like to clear the air. Ethan Die sent out an email and made statements saying that I want to kill individuals at work. That is a false statement. People at the police department are here. They came in that day, they put me in handcuffs, put me in the back of a cop car, put me in there for a few hours, then released me, said, we're sorry, we made a mistake, he's safe, your building's safe, continued to let me go back to work. DHA told me, no, go home. What you did was, more than enough, you went through a lot of trauma, go ahead and go home. Then it was later said by Ethan Die that I was trying to kill people at work, the same predecessor that Ann Edwards here chose to take her position. Again, maybe had he had that master's degree, he would know to keep his mouth closed. Again, maybe had he had that master's degree, he would know to keep his mouth closed.
All right, so next, Kim, Kim West, and then Mac Wilson, and then Ted Semera. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody on the phone on this item?
We do not have any callers for Off Agenda.
Okay, very good, thanks.
You do for others.
Okay, very good.
Good evening to the Board of Supervisors. Good evening to the people that are behind me. My name is Kim Marie West, I've been working for Sacramento County since June 18, 1990. This year, God willing, it'll be 32 years, but I don't know if I can hold on another 32 seconds with the deplorable wages and the conditions that we work under. I'm clerical staff, we have to go in sometimes where we don't fill up to it, and we get abused on a daily basis. I challenge any of you to come and sit and chat, and do the jobs that we do, day after day after day. We risk our lives, we risk our health, we risk our peace of mind to do the job so that we can serve the communities where we work and live. It needs to be a living wage, cost of living is going up, gas is going up, we're facing eviction, we're facing childcare dilemmas, we're facing not being able to buy our lunch or do what we need to do. Rent is going up, you cannot sit there in any good conscience, and you should not sit there in any good conscience, knowing that the people that do the job, and it's one of the hardest, most challenging jobs to do, are not being able to provide for their families. We don't, some days, we don't have enough masks, some days, we don't know. I work at Susie Gaines Mitchell, 24th and Florin, that is an outbreak center right now. That word outbreak is very, that's very contentious, that's very scary, but yet, we're required to do the job. We have more people coming in, less staff, more tasks put upon us, but we smile and we do the best that we can over and beyond. You have no idea the position you put us in when we don't have enough to make sure that we even get home at night. I don't know if you're aware of this, but one of our staff got attacked in the community, and we don't know if she's coming back. So not only do we put ourselves in danger when we're inside the building, we could go across the street to get a soda and not make it back. There are homeless people, there are people that need services, which we do very, very well, but you need to see that we need more than promises, we need more than fast talk, we need more than vacant stairs, we need a living wage so that we can keep on living.
Come on, Mackenzie.
Good afternoon, Board, and fire, y'all. My name is Mackenzie Wilson, and I am the Community Organizer for the Carcerate Sacramento. Tonight, I stand up here as a community member who could not just show up today for the CARES Act report, but listen to these powerful voices and not say something. So wow, I want to appreciate how much fire entered this building today. The power that is reverberating through this county, a special kind of thing is happening that leaves me in awe, and I know my friends, and so many people who are watching you all here today. I want to uplift that these demands of a living wage and a more vibrant and flourishing community, but a deep truth that you refuse to acknowledge keeps creeping up. The thing that connects all social health, mental health workers, teachers, doctors, county workers, it's all what connects us as a community. The thing that leaves us without resources, without good-paying jobs, without schools or healthcare, food access, mental health, substance use services, and resources for family violence. In fact, it's the reason that we don't have prevention. Family and parenting support services, community gardens, good schools with good childcare and after-school programs, and good community building and outreach programs, and not to throw shade, but instead to shine light on our general fund. Seventy-two percent of our general fund goes into carceral systems, y'all, courts, cops, cages, DA's, probation, the place that has been used to treat mental health, homelessness, survival crime, poverty, family violence, and none of our money goes into the roots. In fact, it's all flooded into something that studies are over and over again proving exacerbate the system, and we haven't even gotten into the CARES Act, the CARES Act, you know, the jury report today, you know? Half of what I heard today could have been, you know, prevented. I give thanks for this power that entered this room today and held a giant mirror up at you. And when people on and off your payroll can't eat, and then you criminalize survival crime, you know, then that's a reflection of this county's priorities and values and intentions for its people.
Thanks, Mackenzie. Okay, Ted.
I don't know what else to say. They said it all. They said it all. I've been in front of you many a times, I've met with you on an individual basis, I told you this was coming. If something didn't change at that bargaining table. In March of 2020, we approached this county when this pandemic started, and we asked for hazard pay. We asked for the PPEs, and the response we got back from this county was, we're not willing to open up your contract. Well, guess what, our contract is open. It is open. The then infamous Nav Gill went ahead and shifted order a hundred-something million dollars of CARES Act money over to the brothers and sisters in the Sheriff's Department to cover their raises. I'm not saying they weren't deserving of it, but what did they do for these folks in red? They told them, go back to work. When we begged and pleaded for them to tell the work, when you all were teller working, they told them, no, go back to work. We're asking you, go back to work. Work for, these are your employees, you all five have the ability to tell the departments to dig deep, dig deep in those pockets and value your employees. You can't retain them, and with the proposals on the table for human service, social master degrees, you're not going to be able to recruit them. What they told you is real-time, real-time testimony. If you have a heart, like they have a heart, that would have put a tear in your eye. What the heck is going on here? I appreciate you Supervisor Serna for wearing the red. I appreciate your willingness to say, hey, we want to hear more about that disrespect. That's one of five. The other four of you are quiet here.
I asked a question, Ted.
You did.
Okay.
Thank, you asked a question, okay? But ask the question to your negotiators, ask the question to your county exec. Why aren't they putting more money on the table? Why aren't they valuing those employees? Because the next time we're here, we're going to leave here, so you can go on and do your CARES Act. You have the ability now, with ARPA money, to shift some to these people in red. You do. They deserve it. They deserve it, value them, they're your employees. Because I guarantee, the next time we're here, we're going to be striking you. I had over 100 emails today from members saying, I'm not coming here, but when you strike, we will be there. We don't want to strike you. We don't. Strike is a tool, it's not an objective. You heard these folks, they come into work each and every day, they decide to put gas in the car to serve your constituents versus putting food on the table. So as they make you look good, it's your turn now to make them look good. I want to finish by thanking those that made this happen tonight. It's been a long time since we've had a night meeting. It makes yourself more open to these folks, so they don't have to take time off of work to come and address you. We hope to see more of that. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Ted. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Evan. Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just want to, before you leave, before you leave, I just wanted to... Before you leave, I think everyone understands that when you speak off agenda, we really can't have a detailed conversation about the subject matter, and certainly can't make any decisions, but I do want to thank everyone that spoke, and everyone that took time to join us in chambers for holding us accountable tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you all, have a safe drive home. Okay, Madam Clerk, we've called the next item, please, first item.
Okay, so Item 2 is the response to the February 14, 2022 investigative grand jury report titled Sacramento County Board of Supervisors Abandons Responsibility for COVID-19 CARES Act Spending.
Okay, and Ms. Thomas, I believe you're up. Amanda, good evening. I don't know if it's... Yeah, it's on, check those mics.
Get a little closer?
There you go.
There we go. Good evening. As you know, the Sacramento County Grand Jury reviews and investigates the performance of county, city, and local governing entities, and issues reports with findings and recommendations that must be publicly addressed by the recipients. The grand jury report titled Sacramento County Board of Supervisors Abandons Responsibility for COVID-19 CARES Act Spending was issued on February 14, 2022, and examines the oversight, distribution, and use of coronavirus aid, relief, and economic security, or CARES Act funding, and specifically, the Coronavirus Relief Funds, or CRF, received by both the county and city of Sacramento, and briefly touches on response and mitigation efforts regarding COVID-19. The report includes 14 findings and five recommendations, with three of the 14 findings pertaining only to the city of Sacramento. Proposed responses from the Board of Supervisors to Findings 1 through 11 are included as Attachment 3, and proposed responses to all recommendations are included as Attachment 4. The proposed responses disagree with many of the findings for the reasons that are noted in the responses. Should the Board wish to make any revisions to the proposed responses, revised responses will be brought back to the Board for review and approval at the May 10 meeting. Final responses must be sent to the Presiding Judge of the Superior Court by May 14. Representatives from the Office of Emergency Services and the Departments of Personnel and Finance contributed to the responses and are available to answer questions. Additionally, Kevin Starkey from the county's external auditor, MGO, is also available for questions. As noted in the responses, the county's use of CRF funding was tested as a major program in the single audits performed by MGO for both fiscal year 2019-20 and fiscal year 2020-21, resulting in no audit findings. With that, I'd be happy to help address any questions or receive any input you may have.
Okay, let me turn to colleagues first, do we have any questions regarding any of the content in the responses? Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda, for the brief report. Also, I think the totality of the response was very thoughtful and detailed, which I appreciate. I think there was, at the time that the Board was considering the appropriation of CARES Act funding, certainly a lot of focus, interest, and passion on different sides from different parts of our community about the perception of what was happening. I think that actually the response to the grand jury actually does this Board and this county a great service, because I think it finally makes very clear, in probably the most legal context we've seen so far, what is fact and separate from, you know, perception or a misunderstanding. So I want to applaud all the staff that were responsible for compiling the response, including presumably County Council's Office, yourself, and others. Now, when the grand jury first came out with the report, there was obviously some media attention about it, and I spoke at the time, was quoted in the Sacramento Bee as desiring to have an audit based on some of the preliminary recommendations by the grand jury. Now, in the report, I think you made clear that there actually has already been an audit. I assume that that's an audit that is statutorily required? Is that correct?
Correct, so the county is required to have a single audit performed for the use of federal revenues.
Okay, and is that, is that, I'm asking these questions primarily so that the public can hear the responses. Is the audit, who performs the audit?
That's the county's external auditor, MGO, and as I mentioned, Kevin Starkey is here representing them, should there be any questions that he's best able to address.
Does, do we believe, and I guess I'm addressing this to County Council's Office mostly, do we believe that that separation from this governing body and the county itself is enough to put a lot of faith and trust in the audit, that it is free from any kind of conflict of interest?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, I think that, those are all my questions, Ms. Chair, for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe just to follow on, Amanda, I don't have a specific question, but I do think that, again, Supervisor Serna, I think, illustrated it in his questioning, but there were calls for a second or a third independent audit, basically, and I think the statement here, obviously, we do have an independent audit, it's fairly inclusive, and there is information in the detailed response, but I guess if we could hear either of you or Mr. Starkey as to, just a little bit about the mechanics and how, as relates to the CARES Act, because again, it's come up time and time and time again about how the money was applied, how it was tracked, the stipulations that came from federal government, the guidance around how those monies could be applied, and then how this county chose to do that in order to retain those dollars for general fund support for a variety of programs, but in certainly including public health. But I think it's important, because, again, this is a detailed response, it's responding to grand jury, finding some recommendations in their report, but I think it would be helpful this evening, again, I don't know what the audience is here receiving, but these are all recorded, so I think it's important, because, again, the questions come up, and again, we got, we're going to be responding to another grand jury report here in a few weeks that has similar threads of elements in their report that we've yet to respond to publicly or formally. So I guess, Amanda, if you feel comfortable explaining that, it's fine, or if you want Mr. Starkey or someone else, that would be, I think, helpful for all.
Sure, I just want to make sure I understand your question. Are you interested in the mechanics of the audit itself, how they perform that review? Or is your question...
Yeah, again, how they go through the audit process, because I guess it's pretty standardized, and we have, you know, when you have over $6 billion in funds, $6.5 billion in funds, and, you know, some of those are individualized, others are blended, again, you know, the scope of the audit, and, you know, it costs us a fine sum of money to do that, because that's what we're, you know, how we assure that we comply. So, I'm not so much about the process, but particularly as it relates to the CARES Act... So, I'm not so much about the process, but particularly as it relates to the CARES Act and what the auditor was tasked with looking at in the general audit, but how that applies, because, again, it's embedded in here. And so I don't want to be redundant. People can read the material, but I think it's important for the record. So, that answered your question. I'm looking more for
More for, to describe how the audit evaluated the use of the CARES Act funding?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Correct. Okay. Yeah, I do believe that either Ben Lamera or Mr. Starkey would be best able to answer that question, so.
Okay, thanks, Amanda.
Good evening.
Good evening. Kevin Starkey with MGO. I'm a partner here at our Sacramento office. So, without getting into too much of the weeds, so the single audit is something that has to be conducted on an annual basis. So for entities that receive federal awards, this compliance audit has to be done on an annual basis. So, specific to the CARES Act dollars and CRF specifically, because of the newness of that program to this county and really nationwide, it was a, I would say, a higher-risk program right off the bat. And it was designated as such by the federal agencies that are providing the funds. As part of that audit, specific to that program, the awarding agency puts out specific guidance on the use of the funds, the administration of the program. There's a lot of FAQs, federal, or frequently asked questions that are then addressed by federal agencies as well, which cover things that they can't possibly know out in the realm of all possibilities of what's going to happen in the administration. So we look at not only the underlying guidance that the awarded agency puts out, the FAQs for clarification on that guidance, as well as following the uniform guidance and the general requirements that really are out there on an annual basis. And so, given that framework, we subject that program to the compliance testing. And as a byproduct of that, we did not have any findings as far as the county's use of those funds, both for fiscal year 1920 and for 2021. And so with that, I'll leave it there.
Yeah. So, Kevin, if I could, you know, again, maybe a little more in layperson's terms. So, it was your findings or concurrence, how you structured that, that the funds, as they were received by the county, were appropriately applied, and that there were no exceptions to either guidance and/or rules or FAQs from the agencies which dispensed the funds and obviously that would call into question any misalignment or misuse of those funds or ask for, have them, I guess, could only ask to have them returned to them if they felt they weren't being applied appropriately. But so, again, clean audit or however you state that. I guess, again, I'm not putting words in your mouth, so.
I would say from the testing that we did, the work that we did, again, an audit doesn't test 100% everything.
Yeah, you got $184 million total, 104 that was applied.
Right. So, from the work that we did, we did, we came to the conclusion that, and we did not have any findings as it relates to the expenditure of CRF funds. Now, could a federal agency come in and do their own testing and potentially have? They could.
But your findings would be at least a reasonable defense or explanation? Because we have gone through the single audit. We've had
Correct.
qualified firm. You've looked at it. You've looked at the regulations. You have understanding of how maybe used elsewhere where you do audits. But, so, again, that's part of the reason we do audits. So we have the ability to say to the public that, you know, if there are exceptions, obviously, we didn't make corrections. But if we are no findings against it, that we, you know, we're doing business appropriately and would offer that explanation, I guess. Certainly it's embedded in the report here this evening.
I would say that's accurate, yes.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Anything else? Any questions? Thank you, Kevin. All right. Amanda? Kind of a quiet in here all of a sudden. So, anything else you wanted to add, then? We have the
No.
Okay. Okay. So we have it in writing. Do we have any speakers signed up on this floor? I don't see other supervisors in the queue. Do we have any speakers on item two?
We do. We have two speaker slips, and then we also have folks on the phone.
Okay. Well, I see McKenzie, and then I don't know who else, so. So unless there's any other questions, let me call the speakers. McKenzie, I'll just assume you were first in line here, so as you raise your hand.
No, I'm like, yeah, I didn't know how much of that there is.
No, you weren't. Mr. Harris. So, Mr. Ryan Harris wins the draw. So, Ryan, come on down. And then McKenzie.
Throwing a little bit off with all my friends that were here earlier. Nonetheless, I'm going to address number two. And for number two, as promised, I'm going to give you that video of what happened to me when I took Kennedy Patrick's advice. And I'll explain how it relates to number two when it's done. Because it's HR. And HR has to have an answer. Let them know I've been trying to get these answers for a while. Now I'm at HR. Hello? I'm trying to find someone I could talk to that can answer my questions that I have about some policies that we have. I was at the, I talked to the board supervisor, Kennedy Patrick, and he assured me that if I talked to HR, that someone in HR should be able to answer my questions.
Sure. What's your name?
Ryan Harris.
Okay. Let me
Yeah, no worries. I just popped up on you, so no worries. Let's see. So I said I'll go get someone. Ain't nobody there. Yeah, so, we'll see. Just saw some officers walk up, so we'll see. Hello? I'm waiting on somebody. Do I have to?
They're not going to come.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Okay. So you can answer the questions?
No. How is it not?
The board supervisor, Kennedy Patrick, told me to come up here, and I let him know I'd come up here today.
Oh, you did, you already talked to him?
I did already talk to him. He advised me to come up here. But now you're telling me I can't?
So you got your notice of termination?
Correct.
These kind of questions have to be answered at your school. I don't know the answers to them, but this building is done with that.
Okay.
Okay?
They can get your, your lien and all the documents that they requested, but it's going to have to go through a reenactment of the SCLEA here, you know, all that stuff. They've got me there.
Okay. So do you know why he advised me to come over here? Because I let him know I'd come up here today?
He doesn't know.
Why you advised me to come up here? Why you advised me to come up here? You know where I'm going to play this?
Because that's how they do it. They say, go over there, go whatever. I don't know. But, yeah. You need to go through SCLEA.
With my SCLEA? That's the only time I can get questions answered?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Or go talk to, I doubt he can answer your questions either, but it has to be answered at the SCLEA.
Do you think you're, you never know the policies?
Well, funny thing is, HR doesn't even know the policies. That's why I'm here. And that's why I had to go to the board of supervisors to ask them because they haven't answered any, so.
Well, they're not going to answer it for you.
Okay.
And the board of supervisors probably doesn't have the answers either. I mean, it just seems like it's something
Right. But it's stuff I keep getting discipline for.
Yeah.
So I need those answers.
So Ryan, you need to tie this back into item two, please.
Yeah, so I'm tied into item two. I'll address other meanings of it later. But I did provide that video, how it ties to number two, is that, you know, you gave these, I won't say these people because I don't appreciate when you guys say that to us. But you gave the sheriff's department $108,000 for them to turn around and still say, or $108 million, over $100 million, for them to turn around and still say that you guys don't know what you're talking about, was Officer Aaron Taylor's exact words. He doesn't understand because that's just how they do. You guys say, go over there and go over there, but they don't really know. And the board of supervisors doesn't know the answers, ha, ha, ha. So, again, you know, if you're going to give them over $100 million, you'd think they'd have a little bit better things to say about you. The officer's name is right there, too, if you guys want to talk to her because they did feel very freely about sending her to my house to talk to me.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Okay. Next, following Ryan, then we have McKenzie Wilson. McKenzie?
Good afternoon, board, or good evening.
Good after, good afternoon, good afternoon, evening, McKenzie.
Yeah, it's a good day. I'm trying to be like, which one was which? Here it is, okay. So I want to say that I think all the efforts to deflect responsibility is alarming. I think the blatant disregard for oversight, questioning, updates, information, questions on how we got here, questions that show you, the lack of questions, you know, the questions that show that you have an appetite for a stake in what's happening in your community. I don't have to be on a grand jury to tell you how many times in this building and on Zoom I've seen people bring something to you, and you don't ask any questions about it. And if you do, there's no, there's oftentimes no follow-up to what you've asked about it. How blindly I see these decisions get made in this space, brought to you by staff. It's alarming that you make these decisions so quickly and oftentimes, and often, like I said, blindly. And if, and if I were you, that would bother me, considering that you were literally voted to represent our interests, my interests. How can you know if it's in my best interest or our best interest if you don't know what my interest is? Let alone why it is or is not in my best interest? You haven't even asked me. You haven't asked more questions about it. Example, the funds just yesterday, $1,896 money that could have gone into pockets of folks, you know, that this racism system of policing has caused. Nobody brought that to you beforehand, you know? No, you didn't ask no questions about, like, what this money could do, what? And there was nothing. You had no appetite for the stake of your community in this. Example, the mental health jail that came before you in 2021 that was just brought, you know, no stake in why it is. Why do we have so many unhoused, mentally ill, substance use crisis? Why are there so many people inside? Why is 50% of people with misdemeanors unhoused? Why is this existing inside of our jail? No appetite for the stake of your community. Example, the CARES Act. We're here today to talk about it. Example, when we had to fight for the public health department to get money under NavGIL. You know, example, the first time when we came to this, you know, example, the upcoming Knocked in Lewis report. Simply, if you are not willing to say I'm sorry. Simply, if you are not willing to say where you could improve, then where can you grow? Something needs to change in this county around community participation, participatory policy, budgeting, the way decisions are made. Without, you know, how do we get oversight? The lack of transparency and data collection, the lack of telling people. I mean, I cannot believe that we have to come up, we have a weekend to come up with responses to half the shit that y'all put up on these agendas. Like, that's crazy. And you make decisions about it without questions. You have no questions on why we don't have any resources, why we have no housing, why we have no access. Because if you have, you know what I mean? If you're not, without that appetite and really digging at the root of these things, then you wouldn't have people coming, like me, with your free labor, doing the research and the data for you to tell you that 82% of your jail is pre-trial. To tell you that 50% of your people inside booked on misdemeanors are unhoused. To tell you that 62% of that population is dealing with a mental health crisis. Tell you that 1/3 of that population is dealing with a severe mental health crisis. To tell you that 57% of that population cycles in and out of that building in less, in three days, meaning they should have never have been there in the first place. Could you imagine being snatched up from real life for three whole days? What if you had children or a job? It's, simply, I'm going to go back to, these, all of these things are because of your lack of participation in your decision-making about our lives.
Kim, I need you to wrap up.
Have a great day.
Yeah, good. Thank you for being here. Thanks for your comments. Okay. Do we have anybody on the phone?
For the callers? Yep. If you could transfer the first caller? I think you have about three.
Okay. Very good.
Hi, caller. Excuse me. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yes. Good evening to the board. I was calling, my name is Pamela Harris, and I was calling in response to the grand jury investigation as well as the board's response. I did read that. And one of the concerns I had is that, I do agree that after it was brought to the attention of the board, that the board did some great things to help with the response. However, I do think the lag time, from the time that the money was really allotted to the community and given to the sheriff's department, that we lost some valuable time in responding to the needs of our community. And that includes the restaurants, the businesses that Sue Frost was engaged in. I do think that the county supervisors do have some responsibility in that lag time and our late response to the citizens of Sacramento County. It was not until after Neve Giff's retirement that the respected medical officers' credentials were put before the board and the accurate information with facts that was put before the board, that public health actually received the funding that they needed and that that funding was then funded out into the community. So, reading that report, I felt like the board of supervisors did not take any responsibility or accountability for the fact that they gave up their responsibility of the citizens to Neve Giff, and that was a mistake. We do appreciate the fact that you guys have now called in an auditor to do an audit on it and to do some follow-up. However, in the future, what our request is that you take on your own responsibility and be accountable to the people for the funding that comes into this county. Because we depend on you to make sure that our needs are taken care of, especially in emergency situations, as was with this pandemic. And that's all. And I want to thank you, Donna Tole, for serving your constituents with such integrity over the years. And I'm hoping that your example will be an example for some of the other board members. And thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Pam. Have a good evening.
Next caller, please. Hi, caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yes. Hi. My name is Kula Konig, and I'm a resident of District Four. And, you know, there's one thing to, I, I do not congratulate yourselves for adhering to the letter of the law. You can say that, you know, it was a clean audit. There were no findings. There was no misalignment. But there's a difference between the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. And the spirit of the law was for you to allocate funds in a way that was going to benefit those most directly impacted by the coronavirus. And that is not what you did. Instead, you made it difficult. Public health and advocates had to come to you to fight to make sure that those funds were allocated. So do not congratulate yourselves for merely adhering to the letter of the law. There's a quote, "A society which is based on the letter of the law and never reaches any higher is taking very scarce advantage of the high range of human possibilities." You should go with justice rather than the letter of the law. And again, I come back to this thing about your intent. Now, are you, and even in this, the new current way of funding, you're still not doing things right. You're still not having an equitable approach in terms of how you do this fund. You're not even thinking through, the way you put out the first funds is, what are the outcomes? Who's going to benefit from this, right? Instead, you're doling out funds, pet projects in your districts, and you're not being innovative, again, to achieve that high range of human possibilities. You're just doing the bare minimum. And then, to put insult to injury, you are now contracting with some Florida-based firm, right, to do DEI stuff, to do DEI work within the county, right? We don't, this firm is also led by someone who is not even progressive, meaning somebody who is not looking at equity, has not championed equity-related bills in the Florida State Legislature. What is going on? Again, when I, when I talk about the CARES Act stuff, I'm talking about the, it's indicative of the way that this board is functioning. You're happy because the letter of the law is something that you said yes to, but the spirit of the law, thinking about equity and justice and spending this money in a way that will have outcomes that really transform people's lives, you're still not doing that. That is so problematic, and that is why I want different people sitting in those seats because you're still not getting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kula. Next caller.
My mic is playing tricks on me. Next caller.
Okay.
Okay. It's going on and off, sorry.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yes, hi, Board, County Board of Supervisors. The grand jury report that you all are responding to today highlighted the lack of county infrastructure that created the conditions for the CRF debacle. And what I mean by county infrastructure is, A, there was no separate emergency budget process, B, the public health officer was not making direct presentation to the board, and C, there was no streamlined community or county request process for CARES funds. All items outlined in the grand jury report. All of these are examples of a complete lack of basic county infrastructure and process that we, as a community, have seen clearly and fully during the earliest days of the pandemic, but also outside of emergency circumstances. They say that nothing reveals character so much as a good crisis or emergency. Well, Board of Supervisors, the character of the county that was revealed is one of total chaos and utter lack of transparency. But I think one of the worst pieces of it is your response to these grand jury's findings. It's not, it's beyond just hugely disappointing. It's an insult to the, to, to the thousands of public health employees and DHA employees, but most importantly, to more than 2,000 Sacramento families who lost loved ones during this pandemic. That you all take no responsibility for particularly, particularly for findings, items 10 and 11 around governance, oversight, and transparency is mind-boggling to understand. You talk about conducting an independent audit as a required step in your process, but how many times have you used this same third-party vendor to conduct your audits? How is that independent if the, like, how independent is an audit by a company that has an invested interest in keeping good relations with a longtime client? Furthermore, just because your trusted auditor didn't find anything illegal under federal law, in no way makes what you, the county sheriff, or the county executives did just much less right. Your county executives created a CARES committee with no one from public health on it, and refused to sit down with public health employees until we, the people, exposed your mismanagement. You waited over 140 days before anyone on this board and the county exec showed any level of transparency around the, around how the funds were dispersed. That was only after it came up during public comments. Furthermore, we don't even know where all this money ended up going to. That's not included in this report. All it says is that you didn't, like, we saw no violations of federal law. So while the board did provide funding authority to, like, to DHS and DHA on April 1st via staff testimony back in November of 2020, it was not until mid-August that any item from public health came to the board, and those being small ones at that. Community-based organizations, like, community-based organizations during the same hearings recounted their inability to understand and access the CARES funds. And providing authority via a board item is not the same as providing public health the power and funds to actually do the work, and this then tricking, trickling down to communities in need. Via testimony from public health staff during board meetings back in November, they recounted the numerous barriers facing staff's ability to move any meaningful work forward. What do you have to say for that? That didn't, like, that, it just didn't happen? Is that county council writing that for you? You need to fire them. Lisa needs to be fired for that shit. Yes, after public health staff and the community raised hell about these issues, NavGIL was forced into retirement, and Dr. Caserier started regularly reporting to the board in public health, got, ended up getting increased funding. But this was months, almost a year into the pandemic. That alone requires you, as a board, to take some accountability for the lack of transparency and governance that happened at the onset, at the onset of this pandemic, and actually learn from it. Make meaningful, impactful changes, and use it as an opportunity to build trust in the community. I remember that day. Some of you actually took, like, took responsibility, but more than enough of you were willing to, like, throw your own public health officer under the buck before a community actually stepped up to hold you accountable.
Keon, I need to ask.
I would ask that you all actually show some, I will wrap up here.
Okay.
I would ask you all to actually show a little backbone, and much less, some goddamn authenticity, and not let some, like, not let invested county staff who have served no, like, who are completely divorced from the public benefit and shared common interest that you are elected to represent speak for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay. Next caller, please.
Next caller, please.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I want to say that I am very, very disappointed by the investigative grand jury findings, as it was reported. To me, they show a blatant disregard for the public trust by the Sacramento County, County Board of Supervisors, and also, but slightly less so, by the Sheriff's Department, that the Board of Supervisors is refusing to comply with the recommendations. Tells me that they're either not wanting to reveal things, or that they're not showing a good faith effort. I think it could help earn back the public trust by following through on the recommendations. I think I'm also bothered more by this because there is enough trouble with the federal government misusing funds and the corruption there, and these are federal funds from the taxpayers that are not being used to the best, best purposes and the ones that they are intended for. So, I mean, it just, it's disappointing that my local government is doing, doing that. Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you, caller. Next caller.
That was your last caller.
Okay.
And I will close the queue now.
Okay. All right. Thanks to our callers and to our speakers here this evening, and unless there's any questions by board members, we do have a staff recommendation before.
I'll go ahead and move the staff recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second then to approve the staff recommendation as outlined in the printed report, and if there's nothing further, then I would ask the board to please vote. Okay. Yeah, thank you to our callers. All right, we'll go to next item, item number three.
Okay, for item number three, this is to introduce an ordinance of the Sacramento County Code amending Chapter 4.54 relating to fireworks. Way full reading and continue to May 10th for adoption.
Okay, Mr. Jones, good evening.
Good evening, Chair, Board. Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive of Public Safety and Justice Agency. And I believe we have a PowerPoint that might be ready soon. As you recall, as it comes up, about a month ago, on March 22nd, 2022, there was a presentation on countywide fireworks education, messaging, and enforcement from Sacramento Fire, Sacramento County Sheriff's Office, and our County Public Information Office Director. The board asked the county to bring back tonight a proposed social host ordinance, which will be an additional tool to deal with illegal fireworks and holding violators accountable. I worked with county council on this ordinance and continue to work with the multiple county agencies involved for ongoing education, communication, and enforcement. Like other jurisdictions who have passed such ordinances, we seek to balance protecting the community and avoiding unduly burdening a property owner that might not have known fireworks were being set on their property. I will present the ordinance, and we have representatives from the Sacramento Sheriff's Office as well as Sacramento Metro Fire District to address any questions you may have. And I'll also note that we did all receive last night correspondence from TNT about a few possible changes to the ordinance for the board's consideration as well.
Eric, will you speak to those at the conclusion? Are you, the suggestions that came in from industry representatives, or?
I can do that, Chair.
Okay, that'd be helpful. Okay, thanks.
Sure. So a variety of strategies of education and communication have been used, and this, this is proactive mitigation of education ahead of time to make clear what is legal, what is not, highlighting the dangers. It's electronic and media campaign that's led by the County Public Information Lead, and then we have communications mechanisms to report illegal activity. The first purpose is for the response of our enforcement teams, and the second purpose is to track activity and use this data to determine where to respond, possibly on further dates. The county's current reporting methods were previously brought to you by our County Public Information Lead, but that's 311, or of course, 911, it's, if it's a serious emergency, but also online methods, such as 311.saccounty.net, as well as a dedicated email for fireworks that was set up, which is called reportfireworks@saccounty.gov. And the recipients of all of that correspondence, so we can track it, get it real-time, but also data to track later, are the county PIO, Metro Fire, and Sacramento County Sheriff's Office. And then, of course, addressing illegal sales, so if you will, buy busts, oftentimes on the days or weeks leading up to the Fourth of July. So another just recap of what illegal fireworks are. They are anything that really is explosive, so it does more than just light up, bright flame, or pop, so it's actually explosive, or if they launch into the air. Those are really the, the primary things that make illegal fireworks. There are other fireworks violations noted already in county code, but this is an additional proposed tool to address this issue. It is called a host ordinance, and it's intended to hold property owners and operators accountable for engaging in or allowing illegal fireworks on their property. So we do define what a host is, and this is any person who knowingly permits or allows illegal fireworks to be activated or to be sold on their property. Typical example would be a property owner allowing the firing off of illegal fireworks in their yard, on their property. Typically, it's for a gathering or a large party, and this causes very dangerous conditions, both fire hazards as well as injury to persons.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I ask a question about that?
Sure, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Jones. So does that apply in the case of a rental unit? Would it apply to the property owner or to the leasie or the renter?
So it would apply to the owner if they have knowledge, which is often a difficult piece of evidence to prove. It can also apply to the person who is in charge of, or we would say, operating the property. It could apply to them as well.
And I would imagine that that is even more difficult to prove in the case of multifamily units, where you have several rental units on the same property, correct?
It is. It is a fairly high threshold to, I think it was discussed at the prior meeting, about just the difficulty of finding those accountable for even using them, and then to actually be able to show evidence of an operator-owner actually having knowledge of that. But it has been done, it has been enforced in, in other jurisdictions, and it does give us in this county additional tool, on our tool belt, to be able to address illegal fireworks.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Eric, for the presentation. I had a couple of follow-up questions about this as well. In terms of the, the notice component, would that be, and maybe this is a question for our council, would that be satisfied if a property owner perhaps received a notice from the county that there was a report about someone shooting off illegal fireworks at their property? Would that be, would that be sufficient to establish this level of notice for this, would you say?
I'm just trying to see where you get the, the notice, because in the statute...
No, no, or, no, or should have known.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, reasonably, yeah.
And your question is if they got a violate, a notice from the county that it happened?
Yeah, that, that there had been a report of people shooting off fireworks.
Well, only if they continued to allow it, but not retroactively.
Got it. So prospectively, maybe.
Right.
So, and, and the reason I ask that question is because I had a question with our, our county exec, and I've talked about this with our code enforcement officer. We, I think when this came to us last year, we had a discussion that obviously we were going to wait for now on a social host ordinance. It was, it was kind of close to the Fourth of July, and, and we decided to go a different route last year. But one thing we talked about was somehow compiling a list of, of all of the properties where reports came in, whether that was from 311, or directly to the Sheriff's Department, or the Fire Department, and maybe mail out a notice to those property owners. So that's why I was just, this just made me think of that, and I'd like to follow up with that maybe after your presentation, unless you, unless you want to comment now, Eric.
Yes, I do, Supervisor, thank you. So, so the task force has been meeting just recently to begin to determine the mechanisms of actually how this would be enforced. So I've been in discussions with the Sheriff's Office, our code enforcement, as well as Metro Fire, and a couple of things. Number one is, there, there is some data to show where we had the highest amount of reports. So I know there was the possibility of, of perhaps doing a pilot area. However, what the enforcement task force team seems to be leaning toward is see where the data says that they should be deployed, but also being nimble and flexible to be able to respond to other, you know, reports of very large illegal fireworks shows. But then also preventatively giving out notices to whom the data may show is a potential violator, again, to give them an advanced notice and to do some sort of follow-up patrols just to check up on that.
I appreciate that, and, and I know I'm belaboring this right now in the middle of your presentation, but I'm thinking more along the lines of folks who, who had been reported last Fourth of July.
Yes.
Maybe get those notices out this year before this takes effect. That, that's what I'm thinking.
Yes, and, and that's what we agree with.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Certainly. And that takes us right into really what, what is the enforcement part of this host, and it's through liability and penalties. So first off, there are fines, and so in the ordinance, you'll see, and we examined a number of jurisdictions that have already done this, and we're consistent with what seems to be the industry standard, which is $1,000 fine, so if we determine somebody has violated this. And then it would have an escalating scale, so what that means is $2,500 for a second offense, and then additional would be, go up to $5,000. There's also a response cost recovery component. So that's based on law enforcement or other emergency response handling either the event or incident, but also often there's the disposal of illegal confiscated fireworks. And so there is a component that covers that, and then there would be for the individual that would be going through that process, an appeal process, that could potentially go through the County Department of Revenue Recovery, and those are things that are already outlined in county code. We do discuss that the Sheriff's Office, Fire is, are able to enforce, it's a misdemeanor under this ordinance, and then also code enforcement can administer the administrative fines in this. So we, we have several legs of enforcement that can be used, both misdemeanor crime that would, could go through the district attorney's office, as well as administrative through the county. The, again, the actual logistics of that is in progress, but we felt it was important to at least get the ordinance before you, as they're determining the detail on it. We do also think that it will work well, assuming on staffing and, and budget areas, that not just enforcement on the Fourth of July, which is on a Monday this year, but a few days before that, for example, the weekend. I think our evidence shows that often there are a lot of warm-ups of fireworks setting off in the days prior, especially it being a weekend. The budget is not part of this presentation before you, but just checking in with the various agencies for each day would probably be to have one or two teams to cover the areas needed between $30,000 and $50,000 per day, to put the teams out into the field.
Ms. Chair, excuse me.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Eric, is there, does, does the board have the latitude to consider, on a, maybe a sliding scale of sorts, different levels of penalty, whether it's different amount of, you know, different amounts of fines that are associated with presumably a misdemeanor citation? Based on where illegal fireworks are activated? Let me give you an example. If someone were, I don't know, lighting off bottle rockets in and around a very dry American River Parkway, where clearly there's a lot of combustible material and the likelihood of igniting a urban wildland fire is pretty great, is there, do we have the ability to consider a higher penalty in that instance versus ignition of illegal fireworks in a, in the urban core? And maybe that's a question for council, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have the legal ability to add that to the ordinance if the board chooses to do that. to add that to the ordinance if the board chooses to do that. Administering it may be difficult. And I will say, the way that we've organized this ordinance, the fines that are contemplated, the $1,000, $2,500, and $5,000 are applicable to any violation of the fireworks ordinance, not just the social host liability. So we would have to make a distinction there if that's--
I mean, for instance, could we go, could we make it a $10,000 fine if people are, you know, contributing to the likelihood of a wildland fire in the American River Parkway by way of where they're igniting these things? As an example.
You could legally do that, yes.
Okay.
And Supervisor, I have to add to that. It was a discussion I had with the undersheriff as well as the district attorney's office, that there also may be other charges levied depending upon the circumstance. And one example that the district attorney's office gave would be not just citing or enforcing the fireworks ordinance, but if there are young children around that were clearly endangered, there can be child endangerment charges, et cetera. So there are a lot of other aspects that can be added to the discretion of the responding officers.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
So that does bring us to next steps, which are to return to the board to approve a host ordinance. I do believe through the chair you wanted me to respond to the TNT--
Yeah, if you could. I know Dennis Ravel, I think, was going to call in this evening. He's out of town, so he certainly could add to that. But since we have it riding, and it might be helpful, it might help address some of those things right up front. Eric?
Yes, Chair. So there were three potential additions. And legal counsel, and I felt there were no legal or operational consequences to adding these to the ordinance. I don't see any issue with doing that. It does discuss adding code enforcement into, as an enforcement piece to this as well. We do know through other portions of the county ordinances that, in county code, that they do have enforcement areas to be able to handle administratively. But I felt there was no negative consequence to adding that into this portion, as well as the other, I would say, the second one was to add five foundational explanations to what host liability means. And we received that correspondence as well. And I saw no issue with that. And then the same with the third component, which was to replace some text that's most widely used by other jurisdictions to talk about the cost recovery portion. So it really essentially adds some more detail there. And I saw no issue with those components as well.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Lisa?
Yeah, and I'll just weigh in and concur with what Eric said, but just offer a few more, I guess, justifications for why we did it one way and they're proposing another way, which, again, have no legal ramifications. But as far as the host liability, they have added subsections A through D under 4.54425. And whereas we just had one section, and the reason why we added just the one section is that we are mirroring it off the city of Sacramento, which is obviously the largest jurisdiction in municipal jurisdiction in the county. And we thought it would be easier to be consistent with them. That was the reason why we added it. But there's nothing legally concerning about the five subsections that TNT is requesting. As far as the response costs, I think, let me just double check. Yeah. The response costs, they've added just a different way of putting it, I guess. The reason why we added it, the way we did it, is that it mirrors other sections of the county code. The A, B, C, D sections that they've stricken mirror other sections of the county code. So obviously, for consistency, it makes sense to do it that way, but it's not legally required to do it that way. So that is up to the board as to whether or not you would like to take their suggestions.
On that point, so is that a clear reference, though? So you tie it back, but it requires additional research. It's not there front and center. So does it make sense in that section? I don't know if it does, I'm trying to, what page are you on?
Yeah, let me, I'm talking about 4.54460.
Okay.
That, all of this underlined, I'm looking at their strike through, is what they added. And what they struck out was that the way that it's already in other sections of the county code for other violations. So it doesn't really matter that it's not consistent because this is only under the illegal fireworks section, but just explaining why we did it the way we did. And then there was a section about, I don't see it in this version.
Cost recovery?
I'm looking at the code enforcement, the enforcement. Oh, yeah, here it is. So, and then the other changes in 4.54410. It adds the sheriff, or it adds that the Sacramento County Code Enforcement divisions are authorized to administer and enforce this social host liability provisions. That just makes it clearer, I think, because I believe in other sections of the county code, the code enforcement would have authority to assist the sheriff in enforcing this ordinance. But this makes it clear that they almost have the responsibility. So again, that's a policy decision. I think that the board would need to consider in making code enforcement responsible for enforcement. But from a legal perspective, it's certainly allowable.
Okay. And anything you want to weigh in on that?
Yes, I would recommend against having code enforcement be part of the enforcement. That's really not what they do. Their responsibility would be more in line with the administrative processes, as Mr. Jones described. That doesn't mean they won't be actively involved, because they will.
Because if I understood Lisa correctly, they're already by some cross-reference would be potentially called upon anyway, even without being specifically mentioned here to--
I think that's the way that we envisioned it before. But they, again, have raised concerns, code enforcement has raised concerns with doing it on their own, because obviously, they believe it's a law enforcement thing. So, again, to echo what the county executive says, it doesn't mean that they won't be involved, but they won't have primary responsibility.
Primary responsibility, that'd be the sheriff and/or fire.
Right.
Okay.
So again, a policy consideration that I think is one we're definitely considering. As far as the other issues, again, they don't really impact county finances or operations, so it's not a huge issue.
Okay, thanks. Well, thanks, Eric and Lisa, on that. So is there any other question by board member on the material that's been presented thus far?
Sorry, I'm sorry, can I just say one more thing related to the ordinance changes? If the board would like to consider these changes, they are substantive, so we'll have to reintroduce the ordinance, because tonight you're introducing the ordinance that staff prepared, which is not problematic because we still have time under the timelines to make this effective by the Fourth of July holiday, if the changes are made.
But if we made the changes, this wouldn't be back before us for first introduction until May 10th.
May 10th, and then adoption on the 24th and effective around June 24th.
But every time we make changes, substantive changes and bump it, it's a 60-day consideration, correct? For, to make it effective? First and second, first and second reading?
Well, two weeks, it'd be, yeah.
Because you have to, I thought you had to have 30 days.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Okay.
So if we don't adopt it tonight, it would be, or introduce it tonight, the final adoption would be May 24th, meaning the effective date would be June 24th.
Okay.
And which is still, obviously, in time for--
But it starts to get, starts to crowd the data a little bit.
Right.
So, I mean, in other words, if we're going to make changes, we ought to make sure we get them all in today.
Tonight, yes.
Otherwise, you'll push it past the Fourth of July, unless you did some sort of urgency statute, which would probably gets a little--
Well, hopefully, we're going to have to go there.
Okay, all right. I don't see any other questions by board members, so thank you.
Sorry.
I had Supervisor Frost. I'm sorry. I didn't put it up in the queue. I noticed there were several other surrounding cities that have adopted this ordinance. And when you were talking earlier, you were talking about proof of knowledge of the activity on the part of the homeowner, who might be a landlord. I'm sensitive to that because a landlord might not even be aware and could end up with a fine. So I wonder if you could be more specific on what does that proof look like? Is it a video or an eyewitness? And is there then, how is it working in those other cities? Are they, I'm imagining it's helpful for a homeowner to get a letter that says, you know, that you're, you know, someone on your property has been reported, et cetera, et cetera. And then they become proactively involved. I imagine that's the tool, because it would be very hard to prove that they knew. But can you tell me how you prove they know?
Yes, and that's, that part does have a little higher threshold of evidence, if you will. And that's part of the ordinance that says no or should've known. And that's going to be basic laws of evidence, meaning that the officer or deputy will have to witness it and then see that the property owner was there and should've known about it or was there and knew about it. It could be video evidence, it could be witnesses, or it could be the deputies or law enforcement witnessing it themselves. So if they do arrive on a scene and see evidence of what clearly was a lot of fireworks debris and things, and the property owner may or may not have been there, that's going to all be factored in as to whether we believe they knew or should've known.
So how do we let the homeowners know? How do they know this ordinance passed so that they're not blindsided? Do we reach out to the Realtor community? Or is there a notice that goes out? I mean, how would they know?
We can add that to our communication plan, which is to proactively, that's sort of the education piece in the beginning, is just to really push out through media, social media, all communication, through the website, everything. And we can add certain groups, like Realtor groups. But we want to make, we want to get the information out as a preventative piece and a warning piece so that they'll be more responsible. So that's all part of the education and communication piece as well.
Because potentially, they could then add something in their tenant agreement that would, you know, help mitigate the cost if, for some reason, that tenant broke the rule or whatever, so--
Correct.
That's good, okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Eric, thanks, Lisa. Thanks for the questions, board members. So let's go to, I don't want everybody to sign up in chambers for this item, I have some for the next item. But, so we'll go to the phones, if we have callers.
Yep, we have some callers. So, James, could you transfer the first caller, please?
And I would just note, Supervisor Desmond has a hard stop here this evening, so he may be leaving this before we conclude this item, so.
Okay. Good thing we don't have any four-fifth items. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Well, you still have enough. Go ahead, go ahead, caller, sorry.
Hello, my name is Lee Miller. I live in the unincorporated area, District 5. As the Coordinator of Residents Against Illegal Fireworks, we would like to thank the Board of Supervisors and Staff for the first reading of the Illegal Fireworks Social Host Ordinance on the agenda and moving it forward quickly. We strongly urge you to support and adopt the Fireworks Social Host Ordinance and Cost Recovery Ordinance. We also ask that you adopt the amendments provided to you by Dennis Ravel of Ravel Communications. Sheriff Jones stated in his letter on the grand jury under Agenda Number Two, "The Board is solely responsible for the budget's process, and any changes to this process would need to be done at the Board of Supervisors' level." It is urgent that we have a strong, legal, sound ordinance. And the sheriff agrees that the Board has the authority to allocate funds to allow the sheriff's department to participate in enforcing the illegal fireworks ordinance this Fourth of July. Sheriff Jones and undersheriff Barnes' support are greatly appreciated. Thank you again to all the supervisors that have been so supportive. Thank you again to Sheriff Jones and undersheriff Barnes for their support. Passage of the ordinance will be a positive impact to our community. This program will be successful if we work together to implement a successful process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee, appreciate your advocacy. Thank you very much for calling in this evening. Okay, next caller.
Oh.
Yep, Lee.
I'm sorry, member Lee, call back. That's your Vineyard CPAC member, too. I'm so sorry.
He still had a minute and 20, so he had some time left, okay.
Yeah, okay. James, could you transfer the next caller? And we have an in-person comment, too.
We do. Mackenzie, I bet you Mackenzie got to be under the wire, so we'll call her in a moment.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yes, good evening, Chair and its whole nation. Board members, Dennis Ravel appearing on behalf of our client TNT Fireworks. On behalf of them, as well as the hundreds of Sacramento County residents that you've heard from over the last couple of years on the issue of the illegal fireworks, we would like to express our sincere appreciation to the Board, its members, and county staff, county council, Sacramento Fire, and Sac County Sheriff for their coordination, cooperation on moving this item forward. Tonight is the first step, but a major first step, that this body and the county staff should take great pride in. Adoption of this ordinance is a policy and significant vehicle for enforcement against illegal fireworks. The second step is equally important, that is how and who drives this vehicle and what the driver of this vehicle has the necessary fuel to get it done, be it budget allocations or use of fine revenue to complete the journey and give it a chance to succeed. We would respectfully request that the Board adopt the proposed ordinance with the proposed amendments, most particularly those to Section 4.54425 Host Liability 4.54, 425 Host Liability, and 4.54, 460 Response Cost. Thank you, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Okay, thanks, Dennis. Any questions for Dennis? I don't see any. Thank you, Dennis, for your efforts as well.
Thank you.
Okay, next caller.
Okay, next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
I just want to name the fact that all of you on this Board have more to say about a fireworks ordinance than a grand jury report accusing you of dereliction of duties of the public and abandoning your own public health staff. That, to me, speaks volumes to where your true priorities lie, and goes on to confirm much of what the grand jury report was accusing you of. But what more can I expect at this point? I'll be honest, I don't need to wait for this ordinance to come into effect to know the outcome of having the sheriff enforce this ordinance, this quality of life ordinance. I'll bet each of you money, this is going to disproportionately harm black, brown, and low-income people of color. And I bet you, like, bet you money rather than enforcing this ordinance in wealthier white areas like Land Park, Carmichael, or Fair Oaks, you're going to be policing areas, like underserved areas, like Aron Arcade that has a predominantly more diverse population. Honestly, I, like, I'll be real, like, I really don't know much about the economy of fireworks, but I understand that a lot of the organizations, like high school bands, Girl Scouts, and other community orgs, get money from selling fireworks, and you could all, rather than just prioritizing punishing all of them, like, charging them exorbitant fines and fees that many people can't afford to pay, and/or threatening them with arrest and violent encounters with racist cops, you could be funding those organizations appropriately, so that they can sell fewer fireworks, instead of, like, just prioritizing punishment. Once again, this is what you, like, this is your priority. This is what you get animated about. That speaks volumes to where your priorities lie. And honestly, what more can I expect at this point?
Okay, thank you, Ken. All right, next caller.
Next caller, James. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Great. My name is Francesca Raitano. Good evening, Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. I live in District 1, and I am a constituent of Supervisor Serna. I'm a member of Residents Against Illegal Fireworks, as well as a member of the Board of Directors of the Elmhurst Neighborhood Association in the city of Sacramento. I appreciate the thoughtful comments I heard tonight from city staff and the county council. I urge you to support the Fireworks Social Host and Recovery Ordinance being discussed tonight, to waive full reading and continue this matter to the May 10 meeting for adoption. I also ask, urge you, to seriously consider adopting the amendments proposed by Dennis Revel of Revel Communications, which have been provided to you and which a thoughtful discussion ensued tonight on those amendments. We need a strong, legally defensible ordinance. Staffing issues aside, their first has to be something on the books to enforce. Fiddling when Sacramento burns and the disruption of citizens' peace and comfort and threats to their safety is not a viable option. Social host ordinances have proven results in other cities and counties in California. Yes, let's definitely continue to gather data and share results and best practices, but now, please, the county must do its share to join the effort and keep us all safe. Thank you for all that you do for the county and its residents.
Thank you, Francesca.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next caller.
Okay, next caller, James. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hi.
Hi.
The proposed ordinance, putting the responsibility for use of illegal fireworks on the property owner, or the host, is a nice start, but I do not believe for a moment that it will make a significant difference in the use of illegal fireworks. For one, catching enough of them to change the practice is and seems very unlikely. Also, raising the fines might make those of lesser means think twice, if the risk of getting caught was significantly higher. Costs are often shared among neighbors and attendees, leaving a $1,500 fine, for example, worth the risk, and this is a risk taken by people who already don't care. And I'm wondering, do resources like Report Fire and Mail 'em actually lead to more spiders being caught on the web, or do they just make tracking the reports made by people easier and help to free up the 911 operators? My small community has its share of people with disregard for the law and for the safety of their neighbors, not to mention the pets that suffer immeasurably from any firework. There are many calls to the sheriff from around the community for the same general locations, as I am informed when they call it in, when they say, yes, we've heard that report, we've heard it from numerous other people. The shows go on until they are done, year after year. So, I mean, these people are apparently not getting caught. I suggest it's not already done, although I heard it was mentioned that you're looking at that, the source of the illegal fireworks be more aggressively investigated, and the forces be made to pay hefty consequences. I guess it's like, you know, finding the people that the dealers get the drugs from, so to speak. Anyway, thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you for calling. Appreciate it.
That's it for your callers right now.
Okay, so that concludes our callers. Mackenzie Wilson did sign up, so Mackenzie?
I wanted to read some messages. I think, I think this is one of the first things I ever did, actually, in this space, was read messages from a group chat. It was very cool. And so I think it should be named in no offense, Eric, because we do really look forward to working with you, but I think that this is one of those examples on why it is that we, we had requested that somebody from a public health lens came to a position like this. And instead, unfortunately, Eric, they got a cop. Pretty sure this, like every other quality of life ordinance, is going to disproportionately harm black and brown people. Somebody slammed on that, and they were like, "A thousand percent." Somebody asked who the task force was, you know, probably more carceral partners dabbling in data for licensees to do whatever they want. It talks about how this is more monstrous economic penalties, more money for carceral partners, especially if it's a county obligation to ensure that we're doing something about it. Something, they said that the county loves punishment and they hate public health solutions. Somebody says, how this, how funding public fireworks shows where people don't have to pay and investing in neighborhoods would be a great deterrent. You know, I wouldn't spend money on illegal fireworks if I had one happening in my neighborhood. And a public health approach means talking to my neighbors and figuring out what to do about our dogs. This is the opposite of fines and fees justice. Another shameful day in Sacramento County government, when fines and fees justice is supposed, it's supposed to be a priority of Sacramento County, considering that a third of us pre-pandemic lived in liquid asset poverty. Great, code enforcement is lapdogs. Actually, maybe not that one. Root cause, you know, everybody, everybody wants to talk about root cause. This conversation on the fact that this report was probably put together with zero racial and geographical equity impact assessments. Another way to make broke neighborhoods more broke. Sue, always looking up the landlords. This guy represents big fireworks, big tobacco, TNT fireworks, monopolize fireworks sales, wants people to buy their shit only. Somebody told people I was going to read their comments, and they gave me a firework emoji. Data shows that threat of punishment does not deter or prevent crime. And then I think I'll end with, like, there wasn't even a thought to, like, how do we, like, address illegal fireworks in our community, the way that we address mental health in this community, the way that we address survival crime in this community, the way that we dress substance use crime in this community, that there is never, ever an alternative to, like, how do we embrace this? Instead, it's, "Stop, no, you're done, go to jail, closed doors, back in jail, probation, back in jail, outside jail." Like, this is shameful, y'all. This is super, super shameful. And I do hope that you encourage, that you get to hire somebody with a public health lens to support you in the work that you are about to do. Have a good day.
Thanks, Mackenzie. Okay.
All right.
Any more callers?
Nope, I just closed that, so we're, no more callers.
All right, very good. All right, we'll bring it back to the Board then, and Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly am prepared to support the ordinance, knowing kind of the timeline and the ability and opportunities that we have to offer some changes. Like Mr. Jones, I have no, I don't see any issue with the amendments that Mr. Revel has offered. I just want to make clear, too, because I think one of the callers perhaps mistakenly assumed that this was an ordinance to penalize legal fireworks, the fireworks that are sold by charitable organizations, and it's not. This is to address very dangerous illegal aerial explosive fireworks. So just to make that clear, I think it's important for the public to understand that. I do think that we ought to specifically call out, as I mentioned earlier, a distinction in penalties and/or enforcement as it relates to the American River Parkway, its full length within the county. July 4th occurs as vegetation becomes tinder-dry in the parkway, and unfortunately, we know too well, especially with fire activity in recent years, that hundreds of acres burn each year, and some of that, I have to believe, is attributable to some fireworks activity. So I would like us to consider a fine schedule that incorporates specific mention to the American River Parkway. I would leave it to the smarter legal minds and myself in terms of how to incorporate that language and make reference to the geographic boundaries of the parkway and whatnot. I think, too, that we might want to call out specifically Park Rangers, our Park Ranger Service, and how they can function in a very similar, if not identical, capacity to our sheriff's department as it relates to enforcement and acquisition of evidence and that kind of thing. So, speaking with Supervisor Desmond before he left, he explained to me he's 100% supportive of the concept of doing this. I think the parkway deserves it. I think the people that want to enjoy a parkway that is not fire damaged, and the ecology and natural environment of the parkway, I think deserves, as much as anything else, some attention in this context to help protect it. So, again, it's just an arbitrary number, but I think it's an important enough issue that we might want to consider doubling the current maximum fine of $5,000 to $10,000 for, as it relates to fireworks, illegal firework activity in the, in the parkway or near the parkway. And again, don't have any language specifically, Mr. Chair, to offer, but since it seems that we have some time between now and May 25th, you said?
It'll come back on May 10th, but we have time to do it, no problem.
Yeah, that, that we can have our county council and work with Mr. Jones to figure out how best to incorporate that language.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Serna, any other member of the Board? I did hear the caller, though, that it was the two sections, I was two and three in the letter, I think after I heard certainly Ann speak to it, and Lisa, that as it related to code enforcement, that there's always a reference, but there weren't supposed to be a primary. So I think, as I heard the caller, that it was adding the definitional foundational explanations in the text as related to response cost. So I would support those two. I don't know if the first one's necessary, I think, but the explanation, I would, I would not incorporate that, since it's already incorporated by other reference in other county codes. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, and any other suggestions that we have? A suggestion by Supervisor Serna to have us take a look at the specificity as it relates to the American River Parkway and potential penalties there, as well as enforcement within the framework of the parkway and within the Rangers jurisdiction. So you can do that and have that back to us for consideration. Now, let me ask you, if that comes back and there's a difference of opinion relative to either to the amount of the fine, or you bring this language, you're going to be getting direction, you're going to review it, but if we insert it that evening, then still got to wait two weeks? Is that right?
Well, I'm planning on bringing back an ordinance with everything that we're talking about tonight.
Okay, so.
It'll be the final draft for introduction.
Okay, so I just want to be clear for my colleagues, though, that Supervisor Serna, you know, he's taking a look at it, but he's asking how that incorporated, so unless there's objections, that will be incorporated into the draft you bring us for our consideration for introduction on the 10th of May, so.
Correct.
Okay, as long as folks are comfortable with that, I want to be sure.
Right. And just so I understand, I know there's not a motion on the floor, so when there is, you can either agree with me or not, the information in 4.5, 4.410 regarding enforcement will not include reference to Sacramento County Code Enforcement Division?
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so.
I'll second it. I support all the changes.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded to give that direction. We're not introducing the ordinance this evening, but that's what we'll be bringing back then with that direction. So that's appropriate motion, giving direction around modifications for our consideration May 10th. All right, nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, so let's be back before it's May 10th for introduction and then consideration for final ordinance on May the 24th. Okay, with that then, let's go to item number four.
Okay. Item number four, approval of a military equipment policy authorization for the continued use of military equipment and authorization to purchase and acquire military equipment in the future in compliance with policy.
Okay, Mr. Jones, you're back up.
Thank you, Chair. Supervisors, again, Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive of Public Safety and Justice Agency. This item is for the approval of a military equipment policy. This is a sheriff's office item, and is all law enforcement agencies within the state have to do pursuant to Assembly Bill 481, approved by the governor in September of 2021. It requires a policy complaint process and an annual report to the governing board, which are you, here tonight. Before I turn it over to the Sacramento Sheriff's Office, I did want to address the terminology, or terminology aspect. So here we have, according to the bill, the term military equipment, but there is a difference between equipment itself and what some refer to as militarization or militarized police. Much of these equipment items are tactical and used for specific tactical situations. Some examples are tasers, drones, or less lethal munitions that are designed to actually de-escalate situations. It is often not the equipment item, but rather the policy of how the equipment is used. With that, I will turn it over to Sacramento County Sheriff's Office. I think Captain Donelli will be giving a presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, my apologies.
So if the governing body, reading the legislation, if the governing body does not approve a policy, anything before January 1st, 2022, can't be used, is that it?
I believe that is the case. The governing body, if they don't approve portions of this, that the equipment cannot be used? Is that right, county council?
That's correct, until the governing body approves the actual items for use.
So what happens to it?
That's not addressed in the legislation.
That's why I'm asking, okay.
The only thing I am fairly clear on is it just cannot be used, and it does not go beyond that point that we're aware of.
But there's nothing in the legislation that says it has to be sold by a certain date if there's no action by the governing body?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
Well, also, on that point, you know, selling stuff like this doesn't sound like a great idea either.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Eric. Thanks, Supervisor Kennedy. Okay, Captain Donelli, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Good evening, Chair Nativoli, members of the Board, Madam CEO, Madam Clerk, legal counsel. As stated, my name is Dan Donelli. I'm a captain with the Sacramento Sheriff's Office. I've brought with me, in hopes to answer any questions that the Board may have, colleagues from my office, Lieutenants Carver and Hampton, as well as Sergeant Manning and Deputy Walkowski with our legal. At this time, I would like to respectfully request to share some thoughts in hopes of answering the questions you may have regarding Assembly Bill 481. I'm honored and grateful to have the opportunity to speak with you regarding this very important legislation. Currently, I serve as a commander of the Special Operations Division. Special Operations encompasses multiple specialty teams, such as our SWAT team, the K-9 detail, the Explosive Ordnance Team, the Crisis Negotiators, our Air Operations Detail, the Unmanned Aerial Systems Team, the Emergency Management Team, and the Mounted Detail. The calls from the community for increased transparency and accountability of their law enforcement officers are extremely important and understood, as they are the foundation for the mission of multiple police departments and sheriff's offices across the nation, which is service to our community, and building upon and strengthening our relationships with the public. The Sacramento Sheriff's Office has continued to take additional strides in this positive direction. We could still improve, and we show a willingness to do so with our partnerships with numerous community groups and faith-based organizations, as well as our programs such as Unity in the Community, Links to Law Enforcement, the Sheriff's Community Accountability Board, and the Sheriff's Activity League. We understand the importance of trust from our community and pledge to do everything possible to foster and maintain that trust. The conversations that we are having and will have surrounding this new law, Assembly Bill 481, could not come at a more appropriate time of the year, a time when our law enforcement and extended families, as well as our public supporters, mourn the loss and will remember the ultimate sacrifices of our local officers, Sacramento Sheriff's Deputy Adam Gibson, and Galt Police Officer Harmon Grule, tomorrow at our local memorial. Just yesterday, this Board was gracious enough to offer a resolution in honor of the work of Paul Brown and the entire Sacramento Police and Sheriff Memorial Board. This coming Monday, we will also remember our fallen officers up and down the state of California. In addition to these fallen officers, I feel it's appropriate that we pay homage to our citizen victims of violent and felonious crimes, as well citizen victims of violent and felonious crimes, as well as the families that they leave behind. I mention this in relation to Assembly Bill 481 because all of the equipment that is inventoried and now classified as military equipment per this law are tools that we have been utilizing for decades to protect our citizens and officers and prevent future occurrences of the tragedies that we memorialize tomorrow and next week. De-escalation is our priority when faced with hazardous or critical incidents. Mental crisis and drug-induced psychosis are always taken into account, and steps are taken to mindfully address these situations when we are made aware. Sacramento Sheriff's Office personnel attend multiple hours of training dealing with these topics. We now have crisis intervention teams with dedicated therapists attached to our patrol teams. Our crisis negotiators that respond to critical incidents with our special enforcement detail are some of the best in the nation. This was evidenced yesterday morning when they negotiated a peaceful surrender of a man who had taken a hostage in the city of Sacramento. In the process of this peaceful surrender, many of the tools that are mentioned in Assembly Bill 481 were used in combination with skilled negotiations and de-escalation techniques to bring about the best possible outcome for the hostage taker, the hostage, and the surrounding neighborhood. The tools listed in our inventory are never used on the offensive. As a matter of fact, there are policies and laws in place to prevent this from happening. Rather, they are used in defense of our citizens and officers. They have thus far been successful in minimizing further harm from felonious subjects towards other human beings. They are used in a de-escalation continuum by highly trained professionals that often mitigates the need for more severe and lethal force. On extremely volatile situations, vehicles such as our Rook and the Bearcat have been the focus and magnet for directed gunfire from assailants, preventing stray bullets from striking and penetrating innocent neighbors' homes. This law is the most important that I have seen in my nearly 30 years of law enforcement in terms of the potential implications to law enforcement and the public that we are sworn to protect. We have come so far and made so many advancements in our ability to keep our public safe that to disallow the use of even one of these tools would be an insurmountable step backwards in our ability to keep the public safe. I cannot imagine having to tell a 911 caller that we cannot respond and are not equipped to handle a person shooting a gun in their neighborhood, or even worse, in a school, because we have lost the ability to use the tools to keep them out of harm's way. Many laws, policies, and procedures are already in place to govern the use of these items. There are avenues in place for citizens to complain against what they feel are violations of these laws and policies, as well as undue treatment from our employees. We stand willing and able to receive these complaints and will continue to investigate them to the appropriate extent possible. Again, I appreciate your time. I know this has been a long day for you, and I am available for any questions along with my colleagues.
Well, thank you, Captain Donelli. I have Supervisor Cerna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Captain, for your patience and those of your colleagues to get us to this point and for the presentation. You know, I had a question of staff during the briefing I received on Monday about, you know, the ability to consider line item by line item, different, you know, different equipment in the inventory, including ammunition. And one of the questions I had about the ammunition is fairly specific, and I'm certainly not as well educated or knowledgeable about firearms as you all are, but I do know that a 50 caliber rifle is a pretty impactful weapon in terms of its velocity and the size of the actual bullet. But can you give me an example of when the sheriff's department or any municipal police department would need to use something as powerful as a 50 millimeter rifle?
Yes. Thank you, Supervisor Cerna. I'll start off by saying, in my career, I have never seen this weapon deployed, but I would give you an example of a heavily fortified and armored subject that was presenting a threat to the environment or to our citizens, or perhaps a vehicle that was traveling towards a large crowd, say a marathon, that we needed to disable right away, that we had the ability to penetrate the engine block to disable that vehicle. But again, Supervisor, I have never seen it employed.
No, I would imagine it's probably very infrequently deployed in most departments, but I, again, not knowing, outside of a military context, why a municipal police department would want a caliber that size. I think you've answered. It sounds to me generally it's a caliber that would be deployed when you need to get through materials, whether it's a structure or a vehicle. So that's helpful for me to understand. And then maybe you can answer some questions about, you mentioned in your presentation some of the interest in deploying less lethal equipment. For instance, what is generally referred to as like beanbag shotguns, and I see something here called the less than lethal shotgun, Remington 870. Can you elaborate a little bit about how these types of weapons are deployed and what circumstance?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Supervisor. So all of our 870 shotguns, lethal weapons, have been converted to these less lethal shotguns capable of firing beanbag rounds. These are issued to our patrol officers and are another tool to prevent the need for lethal force. So if we have a combative subject that we are dealing with, oftentimes, we are able to deploy the less lethal munitions, these beanbag rounds, to gain compliance enough to effect an arrest.
Is the Jet Light Rubber Handball Grenade also something that is deployed in a similar way? I mean, just by its very name, it sounds to me like it's not, it's not a weapon that is necessarily lethal. It sounds like it's going to hurt a hell of a lot if you get hit by it, but is that yet another example of a less than lethal weapon in the inventory?
It could be, yes. And those types of rubber batons are generally not employed until we have situations of riots or civil unrest to the point that we are allowed by law to use that equipment. In addition, if we need to during a critical incident or an emergency situation, we need to penetrate a window, those rounds have been extremely effective at penetrating a window to allow us to deliver things such as a throw phone or mini drones or unmanned aerial systems into a residence to gain greater situational awareness.
Great. Thank you. And then in terms of what you just mentioned, your drone inventory, I just want to be clear, are any of the drones actually armed?
No, Supervisor. None of our drones are armed.
Okay. They're used for just image acquisition?
Correct. Greater situational awareness for our incident commanders, for our tactical commanders.
Okay. I think that those are all the questions they have right now. Thank you, Captain. Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain, for being here. Appreciate it, and all of you. I'm just a little confused. I'm not nearly the expert that all of you are on this subject, but this legislation exempts traditional law enforcement equipment. I'm probably not stating that exactly right, but you understand the meaning, right? Is that true?
I think I do.
I've seen many lines in the legislation where it says this does not include.
Standard issue.
Yeah.
Standard issue would include things such as our patrol-issued rifles and handguns.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes, yes, yes. And I guess, and I heard you say that any of these, you know, if you didn't have access to any of these, you wouldn't be as effective and all of that. Is that true? Because, I mean, there's a vast difference in what's in here, from bullets to, you know, much more lethal weapons and so forth. I mean, what I'm trying to say is, not being an expert in your field, but hearing from constituents and concerns, you know, it started out with Mr. Jones talking about this is not about militarization of the police department, but why do we need these, all of these? I mean, could we go through here with a, not us, but you guys, go through this with a fine-tooth comb and determine, well, we may not need that. That might be a little heavy-handed, and we may not need that because we've never even used it before, in my knowledge. And, you know, or is it all or nothing in this?
My rec, if I may be allowed to provide my recommendation, is that we do keep it all, and the reason being is that over decades of doing this job and dealing with the critical incidents and the emergency situations that we have dealt with, we have considered various types of munitions or equipment and determined that everything listed in that inventory is critical for us to continue to provide the ability to keep our neighborhood safe. Now, in the case of Supervisor Cerna bringing up the 50 caliber weapon, because we have never used it doesn't necessarily mean that we will never use it. If we're faced with a situation where we have someone trying to run over a group of runners in a marathon, or if we know of a situation where someone's going to try and ram a semi truck into the Capitol, I could say that we would likely consider this piece of equipment to try and mitigate that threat. And as far as the chemical munitions that you see, if I may elaborate on that a little bit, all of those are used in different situations, dependent on the structure, how many people we have within an environment, whether it's inside or outside. We use a very precise, nationally-recognized formula to deliver a precise amount of a chemical into a structure so as to cause the least amount of harm with the most amount of cooperation. So although there are a lot of items listed, we are very specific with what we use and when, and all of our officers that employ these munitions are highly trained and experts in the field to be able to deliver these items.
And just kind of a sidebar, but just because Supervisor Cerna piqued my curiosity, the sheriff and, I might have been the undersheriff at the time, came into my office many years ago and talked about the fact, this is when drone technology was really escalating, and talked about using drones for, you know, monitoring stuff going out the Capitol and all of those things, unweaponized and all that. Were those military drones? Drones are available beyond the military application, right?
Thank you, first of all, Supervisor Kennedy. That was me in your office.
Was it? Okay. It was a long time ago.
And the equipment that I brought and displayed for you.
You look taller now, by the way.
Oh, it's the shoes. The equipment that I brought and the equipment that we continue to use to this day is exactly, well, with progress technology, is relatively the same, and it is all commercially available. You can go to Costco now and buy the equipment that we utilize. And so to answer your question regarding the use of the unmanned aerial systems, we never use these for surveilling the public.
No, I understand that. Yeah.
And we never use them for routine patrol. And as a matter of fact, during the civil unrest, I made it a point to command people not to use them for that specific incident.
I wasn't challenging that. I can see where there's an application to that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Supervisor Frost.
I'm wondering, I'm remembering back when I was on the city council in Citrus Heights, and we had one of those trucks that can withstand anything. It can, a bomb can go off underneath it, and it's bulletproof. It was something that we got, I guess, from the U.S. Army for a dollar, and we partnered with other jurisdictions. And there were times when hostage situations where other jurisdictions, other counties actually used our vehicle to save lives. And so I understand the importance of having that library of resources that you can draw on in the event you need, there's an extraordinary situation. I'm wondering if the Sacramento Sheriff's Department then partners with other jurisdictions also, or like, are you all working together with these resources to come help each other in the event that there's an extraordinary situation?
Thank you, Supervisor Frost, for that question. So yes, it is very common that we work with our allied partners and either borrow their equipment or let them borrow our equipment. A prime example of that is our Rook Armored Caterpillar tractor. They do not, they being Sacramento Police Department, do not have one currently. They are pursuing one through a grant. They oftentimes use our Rook because of the extended mobility of it, the way it's able to get in between certain structures, as well as its primary ability to accommodate rescuing people from the second story of a structure. So to answer your question, it is very common that, especially with Sacramento Police Department, Elk Grove Police Department, Folsom Police Department, and even Citrus Heights Police Department, that we all work in collaboration, including with our equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Captain, again, I wanted to just thank you certainly for your presentation this evening, and as a part of consideration, and I appreciate the briefing that was given to my chief of staff, I think it was shared with other offices as well, just to give you some advanced picture of what's before us this evening, that one of the things I think would be helpful, I don't know how it fits within the legislative piece, but I think that was part of, I think, the questions you asked, for a format that is user-friendly. This is an inventory. It talks about the purpose, the, how it would be used and/or is used. But I think if this is going to, and as I understand legislation, some annual report that, just as in responding to questions here this evening, I think that information by frame of reference on an annualized basis. So the 50 caliber magazine's never been used, and it isn't used in a year, then that's stated. If the Humvee, the U.S. Services vehicle goes out, goes to, you know, 10 events in a year that you described that, if the high-mobility vehicle that assists a K-9 unit goes, I think kind of in the inventory of where they are used, some of them are for purposes to inform, certainly to protect, to intervene in situations. I think that would be very useful for the general public, certainly from the standpoint of the types of incidents that you respond to, but there's such a variety here, going to some of the questions Supervisor Kennedy asked about with drones, commercially available, but you don't use them for, just as you described, they're not done for surveillance, they're not doing it done for general law enforcement purposes. That information, you know, I think in a format that would maybe be the opening portion of the report, because you'll have that inventory, and that may change from year to year, but that, I think, would be useful for people to know, because then, you know, one, it says that any given year, we respond to five incidents, we use this equipment, others we have available, we didn't use it, we haven't used it, and so I just would be curious your response to that, because I think one of the things you're seeking, in addition, obviously, to what you're bringing, is a recommendation that we approve the inventory list here and all the various categories, but I think you're also seeking direction around, you know, what is the format that, and we may hear from members of the public this evening as well, but I just wanted to get your take on some sort of summary annually that would say, you know, give us, you know, all these categories, we used it, we didn't use it, we used it, and this is how, again, compliant, obviously, with protocols and procedures that the department have in place.
Thank you, Chair Ntoly. So being that this is a new law, we are all still trying to navigate it, as are all of the partners, our regional partners and California partners that we've spoken with. There are some specifications, according to Assembly Bill 481, of what should be included in the annual report and in a And in addition to that, we would certainly be willing to work with the board and any information that you would like to see, to the best of our ability. Because in addition to what exactly we're going to put on this report, we are considering how we're going to mine the data that would substantiate these reports. And so we don't necessarily have one clearinghouse for all of our data. We seem to have numerous sources. But as you can imagine, this equipment is going to span multiple service areas, and so we're going to have to figure out, and that is our challenge, on how to compile all this data and how to mine that data from our, either critical incidents or our calls for service on rare occasions when this equipment is utilized.
And maybe just, and again, I appreciate that, because obviously it's new, but I think in certain, encapsulating that in a 12-month period, and then providing it in some format that's one, understandable, readable, and useful, certainly to the department, because it's required in the law, but also, I think, useful to the public to know, because these are all public assets. Obviously, they're deployed under the authority of the, of our sheriff and the command staff. So I also wanted to ask about the number of rounds that we keep on hand, because in some cases, we've never used rounds, but you have 1,000 rounds or 5,000 rounds. I assume there's a shelf life for ammunition. It may be fairly lengthy, but, you know, my recollection, if it serves me correct, there is, and so if you buy 20,000 rounds, you're not deploying any 20, and they sit on the shelf at a dollar a round, or whatever the cost is here. So who is responsible? Is that you, or people that are under your command that are responsible for the inventory, for making sure that the, you know, the inventory that's available, ammunition in particular, one is secure, but also that it, you know, hasn't exceeded the shelf life? And, and I guess, who makes the determination that 5,000 rounds versus 20,000 rounds versus 1,000 rounds of any particular, you know, portion of your munitions are the proper number?
Well, thank you for that question. And I, if he feels comfortable in speaking to it, I happen to bring our range master with me this evening.
Okay. And I don't mean to bore you into so much detail, but again, as we're looking at the inventory, this is, you know, helpful to have a understanding, so, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jason Manning with the Sheriff's Department, and I'm assigned to our range. We keep, the amount of rounds that we have is based on our anticipated need in the field for operational needs and our training needs. So we've got ammunition that's going to be used for training, as well as deployed in the field, and when it's time to order new ammunition, we simply do that.
So it was, just, I appreciate the explanation on that, but if you're using a training, that's in a specified situation, that, you know, obviously trains folks to be prepared to use the ammunition in the field. But I would think as part of any annual report, if you expend rounds and it's replaced, and if you hold that, oh, this used to, on the pages that have the inventory on the ammunition, as I said, it runs from 20,000 rounds down to 1,000, depending upon, that should be part of the explanation. If you expend half of that inventory in training in any given year, so there's understanding of what's used in training, but rarely if ever used in the field, using some of the examples that Captain Donelli referenced. So I think it would be helpful, because then it gives understanding about, you do train for it, and people, if they're deployed, you have folks who are capable of using them in those situations that, you know, may be rare but could occur, but also that, you know, all these don't sit static on the shelf, as I understand your explanation.
Yeah, it's a rotating stock. So we're using ammunition in training, we're deploying ammunition in the field. When they come down to qualify, for example, they're utilizing the ammunition that they've been carrying in the field for six months or so, and they're getting new ammunition before they go back out in the field. And then we're utilizing quite a bit of ammunition in training. And as I understand it, in the Assembly Bill, we're able to order 10% of our ammunition stock per year to replenish our supply without returning. And I would say the shelf life of the ammunition is easily 10 years.
Okay. So, and you, so I didn't realize the legislation, I was not that familiar with it, actually has a limitation on any replacement of your stock, so. And maybe just an earlier question, since Supervisor Serna asked about it, but on the 50 caliber, I understand, and certainly in Mr. Kevin Donelli's career, he's never seen it deployed in the field. Do you train with that, though? And so there are personnel that are trained to use that in the event that, he talked about a hypothetical situation, but it could be real. So do you use the 50 caliber in training?
Absolutely, yes. Our special enforcement detail is assigned, that weapon is assigned to our special enforcement detail, and they bring it out to the range, they train with it. And again, the ammunition supply for that weapon is rotated.
In the event, and I assume there are different protocols for different equipment usage here, but under, is it all under your command, Captain Donelli, that if a call were made on certain equipment usage, and, you know, whether it's vehicles or certainly use of certain types of weaponry, or is there just, is it adopted protocol, so situational, you may not be on shift, or Officer Manning may not be on shift? And so what's the protocol for using the things that are in the inventory here?
During a critical incident or emergency, provided there is an opportunity for a supervisor or even our tactical commander who is here this evening to get involved, then certainly permission would be asked and answered in that incident, if time permitted. If not, we trust that our members are trained enough to utilize this equipment, have done so in the past, continue to do so, and have, we give a certain amount of reactionary authority to our officers to handle a situation that is a split-second decision. But in a typical pre-planned high-risk search warrant or a critical incident, there is a constant and consistent communication between, say, the SWAT team leaders and our tactical commander, consistently asking for permission to do certain things within that emergency.
So contextual, as it relates to the context of whatever the situation is and the assessments being made?
Whenever the opportunity is provided, they ask for permission, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to ask about one of the vehicles here that apparently has never been put in use. I was going to surprise the dump truck out at RCCC that is now, I guess, being decommissioned, it's never been used, but is there no other department in the county, i.e. Department of Transportation or Department of Water Resources, that could use that vehicle? Maybe it's equipped differently than ones we'd used, but it sounds like we've had it for well over 10 years, actually, I guess, going on 30 years or more, and it's never been, never been used.
Yes, thank you for that question. If I may defer to Lieutenant Hampton, because he looked specifically into this item.
You got the dump truck.
He got the dump truck.
Lieutenant Sean Hampton, Special Operations, Real Tactical Commander. So the dump truck, when we were doing this inventory, I looked specifically at equipment we utilize frequently and other equipment that we may not utilize very often. This is one of the vehicles that I discovered we had. It is inoperable, it's been inoperable since we took possession of it. So we obtained that vehicle via the 1033 program. I don't know what the purpose was for obtaining that vehicle at that time, but we are in the process of decommissioning that. We also are in the process of evaluating and reevaluating the need of some of the other vehicles that we have, such as the two-and-a-half-ton vehicle that's listed on there, we're looking at getting rid of that. There's a Peacekeeper that's listed on there currently. At the time this inventory was compiled, we have decommissioned that vehicle, and it's no longer in possession of the Sheriff's Office.
Interesting enough that the dump truck was received the year before we had the first round of flooding, and we had to evacuate RCCC in 1986, and then obviously we had a subsequent event, but it was never used, and it was been in our possession. I guess it wasn't operable from the time we received it. So, I mean, I know that we, again, the evacuation wasn't done via dump trucks, but there was certainly flooding that, you know, two or three foot deep.
So it's my understanding that the, that the two-and-a-half-ton vehicle that we currently have was operable at the time we received it, and was obtained for that specific intent of doing evacuations, say, from the Rio Custodians Correctional Center or other places within the county.
Yeah. Was it ever used in that way, though? It was intended but never used?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
But again, I've only been around for 28 years, so.
Okay. All right, thanks, Sean. Very good. Appreciate it. That's all the questions I had, so. All right, I don't see any other supervisor in the queue, so Captain, if you'll stand by, do we have public comment on this item? I see.
Yeah, we do have three callers.
Okay, we'll take, I think we'll take Mackenzie, she's in chambers, if you're, you're, okay, all right.
And I thought you had another.
Oh, and I do. Yeah, I have Mr. Harris, too, as well, so.
Yeah, I think he was first.
Okay, Ryan, you're first, so then Mackenzie, you can just hold for a second. Mr. Harris? Actually, signed up yesterday. Thanks for reminding Flo.
I had to take a quick video for my friends.
Okay.
When they wonder why all this powerful equipment is being used on us, I could let them know that they weren't here to speak their mind. So earlier today, I had mentioned integrity, and I myself have integrity, so I wanted to say that. I agree with Kenny Patrick in his statements of, does everything on that list have to be used? Is it for sure all or nothing, given it's been said that, you know, a lot of it has never been used, and I understand you guys may need it for that one time, but it's just something that I would recommend looking into, especially after it was just said, again, I'm not too knowledgeable in this, but the dump truck or whatnot, he said was non-operable since they received it. So that sounds like a big waste right there. Nonetheless, military equipment, I didn't get a chance to look at a listing of everything that you guys were trying to purchase or whatnot, but I just have some questions. I come here pretty often, I'm pretty sure that they're going to give you guys what you request, I don't really have too many doubts in that, so can't really sway your guys' mind too much in telling you not to. However, hopefully I can touch your guys' hearts in explaining that when you guys use this stuff, it really does impact families that you guys use this stuff on. My father, he retired from the Sheriff's Department, Scott Harris, I don't know, some of you may know him, some of you may not. And some friends of mine, you guys were looking for someone, he had gone into the neighborhood, and this person that you guys were looking for, he had chose to hide out in my friend's shed in the backyard. You guys did evacuate everyone from the house, we were able to see the use of the drones, you guys drove, flowed the drone through the whole house and everything, just to look and make sure. You did end up finding him, the individual that you were looking for, in the shed in their backyard. To get them out, you guys shot tear gas or chemicals, that's why I was questioning once you had mentioned chemicals. You guys shot some pretty severe chemicals into their shed. They have nine children. Those chemicals left big, huge holes in the wall. You guys didn't care nothing about repairing the holes, you guys didn't care nothing about the kids, you guys didn't care about the fact that those chemicals stayed there long after you guys left, long after that individual was arrested. I'm sure you guys all did the training, so you know how harshly those chemicals feel when they're inhaled. Try being, you know, a two-year-old, a one-year-old, a nine-year-old, an 11-year-old, a 17-year-old, an 18-year-old, having to breathe in those same things. So just, you know, just use them correctly and have some care for what you guys are being permitted to use. And with misuse of the policy, as we put into play that all these policies are allowed and accepted, do you guys have any policies for if there is misuse of the policy, and what's going to happen? And how in-depth are those policies for misuse? Meaning, will it say something, but, just because I'm learning with the county, if it's not there in writing, they might look past it. So if it's not your standard-issue equipment, will they be held the same as if they used military equipment incorrectly? Because similar to, Serna had mentioned about the fireworks and the impacting the river area, certain areas allow for certain levels of severity. So I would believe that certain uses of equipment should allow for higher levels of severity as well. So if you do have military use, I'm fully aware of that. If you do have military use, you guys should have some military use policies that would make sure you guys do do the correct thing with them.
Good. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Okay, now Mackenzie? And then we'll take the callers on the phone.
This one's actually particularly personal to me. I think I let some of you in on the stuff that happened after 2020, and the step back I had to take as a community organizer, because I recognize the escalation and that this will actually only get worse. So first, I want to bring up a point of the use of force policy that the Sheriff's Department talks about. I think that y'all should take it upon yourselves to find out if this is in compliance with state law, new state legislation has come around. Even our recent lawsuit against the City of Sacramento alleges that its crowd control manual is actually in violation of First Amendment rights. So a deep dive into what our current general orders and what our current use of force policies within the Sheriff's Department, and when and how, and how, and what they have to, and what criteria in which that officer has to use to justify the situation in which they can blow tear gas into a house, let alone into a crowd, is all stuff that you can require, and all stuff that it would have, would have to be something the Sheriff's Department produces and then, and then holds their staff to. But we know how that goes. But I do want to bring that up, because that is something that you can do. Something I also wanted to mention around the last thing, because it'll lead me into my next thing, was on the last item. 72% of our general fund goes to the criminalization of about 40,000 people who cycle in and out of the jail of the year. So means 3% of our, of our, of our population, as for 72% of our general fund is meant, is on the criminalization of 3% of our county. And having, and hearing us celebrate child endangerment charges for lighting a firework at the discretion of an officer who's been trained to force me into de-escalation is problematic. My experience is something that I wanted to talk about. Hmm, yeah, this is bothering me, and I didn't know it would so much. I've been on the front line of advocating for basic human rights and needs for years. That's put me in the position of not being able to walk down the street without being intimidated by your local law enforcement. Thank you, Flo. We can skip the fact that half these cops, I don't know, but they can call me by me and my child's first name when we're at the park, and I don't know why or how. And I can jump to a time when this, every time that this city is taken to the streets, and better, I'm going to jump to the rebellions of 2020, when every single less-than-lethal weapon was used offensively against myself and others. I remember so many cops who were so excited to be wearing that riot gear, I, it was sickening, the faces of joy that were on, that were on your officers' faces. I remember being told that I couldn't protest, and that the efforts to de-escalate and tell me to go home looked like an overhead-handed baton to my body and to the bodies of others. I remember bullet, pepper bullets and tear gas in the air, not being able to breathe, that J Street, a street I grew up on and walk on still, was turned into a fucking war zone. Words from a friend. I remember people on their knees and their hands up, and I remember me and my friends, me and my friends being pointed at and shot with rubber bullets in the head. I remember the militarized gear worn by law enforcement when we tried to go to the courthouse for jail support for the people that they had arrested. It was 1:00 in the fucking afternoon on a Wednesday, and you shut down I Street in your militarized gear, and you recorded our faces. This wasn't even in the middle of the rebellion, and you stood on rooftops, and then you closed on visiting so people inside couldn't even see their family members, and you held it for hours, for multiple days. I hear dangerous situations, but I'm here to tell you that any interaction when law enforcement is dangerous. When your goal is our forced compliance, even your de-escalation is less lethal force, you admit it. And I say all of these things because your Sheriff's Department harmed this community with half of the things on that list for weeks. And what data are they using to anticipate the needs that they're going to use it on us? These questions didn't come from you, these questions are coming from me. Where's your appetite for the care of us and for what these law enforcement officers are doing? I recognize my time, and I'm going to try and hurry, but how many of these dangerous situations could be alienated, alleviated, and eradicated by adopting policies and budget that reflect community care? that reflect community care, communities that are resourced, fed, educated, and therefore freer? I would expect you to expect a lot from these annual reports, a vigorous process for them to request the need for anything new. For any new thing that should be, should be run by the public, you should ban tear gas and rubber bullets. And again, require so much from the sheriff's use-of-force policy and do an audit that it is up to date with current state laws and not in violation of any of my First Amendment rights. Because what I know is that y'all, is that the possibility that y'all will continue to let us starve means, and as long as law enforcement continues to kill black people, civil unrest will only continue. And I've seen what happens, and the escalations don't stop. And Scott Jones and his department, all summer long and continuously, have always celebrated and in the news boasting about their ability to show overwhelming force. Well, I need you all to tell these fools that that kind of force is not welcome and that J Street isn't a fucking war zone.
Mackenzie, please refrain using, I know it's emotional, but refrain from using the F-word if you could, please.
First amendment.
I know, I know, I know, but we, but.
Don't do it.
Okay. Well, I give you a lot of extra time, because again, I, yeah.
Yeah, I was expecting a caller.
Okay.
We have lots of many people.
Okay, okay, all right. We have callers on the phone?
Yes, James, can you transfer the first caller? We have about five.
Okay.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Gabrielle Ingram with District Two, and I don't often agree with Mackenzie. I have had her activists in my face in 2020, but this is something that I agree on. So I understand that some of these items are mischaracterized by California. California likes to call everything an assault something or military equipment. I don't have a problem with 9mm and .308 ammo. I would love to shoot that Colt M4, but battering ram slugs, I get. But when we're into LRADs, long-range acoustic devices, or we're into shock waves and microwave weapons, that's a hard no. That, in a city, in a suburban area, there is no reason that I can fathom for that, even when you look at the chaos over the United States in 2020 and 2021. When you look at other countries, take a look at Canberra, Australia, look at Canada, where the LRADs and the microwave technology has been used. Look at Havana syndrome, the brain injuries associated with U.S. diplomats, that's microwave weapons. So the symptoms are not for peacekeeping. They don't simply halt somebody so you can make an arrest. They're not for peaceful protests. They're not even appropriate force on an attack, in my opinion. I can't think of anybody I would want that technology used against. They fit the definition of torture. They're grotesque and traumatic. Look up what they do to the human body, these LRADs, the microwave weapons, even when they're used appropriately. I've watched, I don't know, I just, I think that there are parts of the list that I understand for law enforcement, for peacekeeping, for extreme situations. But I agree, this is a rare evening, I agree with Cerna and Kennedy that it would be appropriate to separate some of these items off the list. Because I can't imagine for peacekeeping, I mean, the Sacramento Police Department, we're having the same thing. They're looking at adding some of this equipment. What is California? What is, what are our law enforcement preparing for? It makes me really nervous that, to have a lot of this equipment. So I have very strong concerns about some of these items. I think that they're out of line even under extreme search situations. And when you look at Australia and Canada and places where these items have been used, they verge on crimes against humanity. And I embrace law enforcement. I'm supposed to be there tomorrow with friends for the memorial, but I'm not okay with this. So thank you.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Okay, next caller.
Okay, next caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
You know, as awful as the board's response to the grand jury report is, I didn't really bother mentioning that sheriff's poor response to the grand jury report because I know them to be a gang of lying white supremacists with state and corporate sponsorship who run the Sheriff's Department as a billion-dollar business while moonlighting as cops. Lying to this board and the public is just par for the course, so I expect no less in their response to a grand jury. What was particularly cute I heard tonight was the sheriff deputy talking about the number of people, or the number of deputies that have been killed in the line of duty. As grave as any loss of life is, I want to, like, it does, which, and this story in particular does well to tug at our heartstrings, I want to ask this board, does anybody know how many Sacramento County Sheriff's deputies have been killed in the line of duty in the last 172 years? Twenty-two deputies, 13 of whom were killed by gunfire. Do you know how many people have been killed by the Sacramento Sheriff's Department in the last seven years alone? 25 people, 13 killed by gunfire, and 12 of them in their custody that we know about. I want to, I raise all this to really ask because the questions that I heard that we should be asking about this military policy, I didn't get, I didn't actually hear being asked. So I would actually appreciate it if you all stepped up to the plate to, like, to raise these yourselves and really get to the bottom of this before you just approve of this policy carte blanche. For instance, is there any part of this policy that requires comparative reporting to show how Sacramento sheriffs intend to use them compared with the U.S. military? Will this policy require any demographic reporting to provide annual metrics on where this equipment is used and in what context? Does this policy require county approval before Sacramento sheriffs may apply for any military equipment grants? Not just the budget allocation, the grant that they apply for year-round. Does this policy commit sheriffs to show the utmost regard for the preservation of life for all county residents, including suspects? Does this policy, like, why does this policy include the purchase and use of grenade launchers? Apart from its obvious military application to cause mass casualties with a single shot, how does Sacramento sheriff justify its necessity in use in a civilian setting? Also, what level of training does this policy require in the use of the military equipment by sheriff's deputies? I understand you're willing to eat up his, like, line that all of the Sacramento Sheriff's Department deputy, personnel are highly trained in using military equipment, but as someone that's actually served in the military, I can tell you, this takes, like, this shit takes years of training to actually develop. It's not just something that a 19, like, the average 19-week course that police officers are required to go through actually, like, can actually know. I really hope that you all are asking these serious questions and really thinking deep on why we would ever want to, like, to militarize any local police department with the same mil, like, same military equipment that is used to kill thousands of people overseas in, like, in communities of war, when, as we can see, the number of deputies that have been killed since the, since the sheriff's inception in 1850 is far smaller compared to the number of people that have been killed in Sacramento by the sheriffs over the years. And it's dwarfed, it's nothing in comparison to the thousands of people that have been killed on a yearly basis, just in the last 10 years alone. Police in this country killed tens of thousands of people in just the last decade, and we do nothing about that while they whine and cry to us, asking for more money, which this county is all too willing to give more than half a billion dollars to. I hope you're asking these questions tonight, board supervisors.
Okay, thank you, Kim. All right, next caller.
Send the next caller, please. We have about four or five more. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes. If you could re, mute the meeting in the background before you start talking.
Yes, hi, this is Flanka. Just like Mr. Harris said earlier, you all do what you want regardless of our comments. But anyway, the sheriff and government is supposed to represent us, the people. We are supposed to, or they, you guys are supposed to serve us. One of your, your main duties is to secure our rights, as outlined in the California Constitution and the Constitution of the United States of America. We are talking about military equipment. It is militari equipment. The name states what the equipment is for. I am an Iraq combat veteran. I served in OIF too. I've seen firsthand what some of this equipment does. Will these tools be used against us citizens? The California Legislature is currently trying to pass a law that law enforcement has to enforce public health orders or be defunded. Questions to consider, are we on our way to what is happening in China, a police state? A sheriff deputy told me that he follows orders from the supervisors. Government and sheriffs are meant to secure our rights, not follow orders from the Board of Supervisors, not to follow orders from public health, not to follow orders from the governor or even the president. How is this military equipment in line with securing our rights? In compliance with the policy you guys are talking about, any law that goes against our rights is null and void, according to our Constitution. So again, I kindly ask a board member to please ask, how is this policy and equipment aligned with securing our rights? The Constitution is not suspended in an emergency, neither are the Bill of Rights. And when I called upon a sheriff to help me, I was told the sheriff follows orders. What the previous speakers said also happened in the Capitol about the misuse of this equipment. There was defenseless mothers who were arrested because they were participating in civics, engaging in peaceful noncompliance. Will this keep happening? Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Next caller.
Next caller, James. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, unfortunately, I became aware of this issue too late. Still, I feel compelled to give my public input. To the board, has it and can it be proved with robust data that militarizing civilian law enforcement is necessary and essential to do their jobs and save lives? Show me. Or is it merely a grab of free toys for law enforcement to quote-unquote "play with"? Seriously, I believe it is more the latter. It makes the job more exciting. And when I say toys, I don't, I'm not talking about toy toys, but just that exciting factor in a job that can become routine. Keeping perspective of what law enforcement's primary role is, is of utmost importance to me. They should want their job to be routine and boring because that means crime is under control. And isn't there enough of a problem with the relationship between the people and law enforcement? Is utilizing military-level equipment going to help or hurt that on both sides of the relationship? At the end of the day, law enforcement is a taxpayer-funded career to serve the public, so the relationship with the customer is mostly on them. Also, power can corrupt. Militarizing changes the character of what city police or sher, changes, I guess, the optic of that and how they view themselves and how the public views them. I don't think it was ever meant for the military equipment to be repurposed back to civilian law enforcement. It was meant for war, for the military. And in so doing, to give a militaristic feel to our here-to-help and serve-the-community law enforcement, it just loses that feeling. And it makes no logical sense that the equipment and training available and developed over the years isn't enough. Is Sacramento that unsafe, full of violent criminals that are also militarily armed? There are bad actors on the streets, and some are very bad, but in my opinion, they're not worthy of our streets looking like drug cartel war zones, like you'd see on the 5:00 news, you know, with military-style equipment going around. I mean, I understand that you'd only use it for certain things, but the appearance of our police having to use military-grade equipment, it gives me a really bad taste in my mouth. I strongly believe that, that this should not be authorized. I would like to see the military-grade equipment that's in possession returned to the military and that we don't receive anymore. I think it's bad on the military to have allowed this to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments and every call. Next caller.
Next caller, please. I think we have about three.
Okay.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, board of supervisors. It's definitely past my bedtime, but I'm just too heartbroken to not call in tonight. First, I just want to thank MAC for their vulnerability and willingness to share the truth with you all tonight. I hope you really are as grateful as I am and I know other community members are. They are an expert and have been on the front lines of the violence caused by the Sheriff's It's so dissociating to hear the county's, county's leadership, this county's leadership talk about racial justice and George Floyd and Breonna Taylor and then do nothing to prevent violent responses to racial justice protests when the opportunity is handed to you on a silver platter. This is honestly, listening to this is just honestly so deeply, deeply heartbreaking. I'm, I'm just heartbroken that you all, this board, elected to represent us, don't seem to be taking this opportunity created by the state legislature and community organizers to hold the sheriff accountable. The sheriff has used their military equipment to make, to make my friends' bodies bleed. Their rubber bullets almost killed my, almost killed a dear friend of mine in 2020, one of the most gentle people I've ever known. And this military equipment has not and will not make us safer. It will not prevent crime. It, this will not make us safer.
Thank you, Liz.
Okay, next caller.
Before you take your next caller, I wanted to ask you a question, so.
Just one second, James.
Yeah, if I could, so maybe this is for Lisa. So what's before us, the statute required an introduction of the discussion by May 1st, we're not under any immediacy to have to act this evening. There's what, 180 days? So we're hearing from folks this evening, we've asked some questions of the Sheriff's Department. We're not required to act this evening, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But we won't, again, but for utilization for any of the items that are listed here, whatever their nature, we would have to act within 180 days. Otherwise, they would be prohibited from using everything that's listed here, is that correct?
That's my interpretation of the statute.
Okay. So again, I just, I think for purposes of this evening, though, again, as we're receiving certainly testimony and getting an opportunity to hear from folks, certainly from the Sheriff's Department, also from the community, I just wanted to be clear. So this is meeting the law relative to the first public hearing and introducing the topic and discussion, but we have ample opportunity over the course of the next six months to ask more questions and to have this back before us, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks, Lisa.
Through the chair, Mr. Chair. So I just want to make, make certain I heard correctly. If we don't act today, then the Sheriff's Department is unable with every passing day to use the equipment?
No, that's not.
No, no, it's all right.
Yeah. So I'll refer to the actual statute. It's Government Code 7071 subdivision A2. It says no later than May 1st, 2020, law enforcement. It says, "No later than May 1st, 2020, a law enforcement agency seeking to continue the use of military equipment shall commence a governing body approval process in accordance with this section. If the governing body does not approve the continuing use of equipment, within 180 days of submission of the military equipment policy, the law enforcement agency shall cease to use the military equipment." So in other words, we have, they have six months to continue using it, according to the statute.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that was my understanding. Eric, did you want to weigh in the same thing?
No, thank you, Chair. That was the clarification.
Great, okay, good. Thank you. Okay, all right, next caller, Flo, go ahead. Sorry.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Denise Reinfeld. Upon reading this description of military use, I initially thought, well, these are necessary, you know, drones are necessary and a lot of these vehicles, they're all necessary. I mean, our law enforcement are, have a difficult job. Some of these criminals on the streets have military-grade weapons. So I thought, yeah, this is, you know, I think that they should get these things, but once I started getting into the 50 caliber and I got to this 40 millimeter launcher, I started wondering, is this really necessary? Because I see this 40 millimeter launcher is used in ground, crowd and riot control situations to deploy chemical agents, smoke and aerial distraction devices. And I think if there's a situation that would require something of this magnitude, then isn't there like the National Guard? Shouldn't that be a National Guard military? Reason to be out there and not our law enforcement. We need our law enforcement to do our city things and let the National Guard come out and do things that are in that magnitude that would need this kind of stuff. But I mean, I think it does need to be separated in what should be issued. I don't think some of these things are, our police officers should be put in the middle of. Their jobs are hard enough, let's utilize our National Guard for things that would require something like that. I mean, I don't know my weapons, I don't know guns. I'm just saying that for riot control and crowd control, I think it's going overboard and can be too much, too much force. And that's all. And just thank you for being there this late. I appreciate that you're listening to us and thank you.
Thank you caller. Okay, next caller.
You transfer the next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. When do I start?
Go ahead.
You can start now.
Okay. I'd like to make comments directed at the people that are so intense about military hardware coming to the city police or the county sheriff or law enforcement in any city, any state in America. I am a minority man, dark skin. What I did do was follow and observe different peaceful protests over the time, 2020 on. What I did notice, peaceful protests were not peaceful. They were violent. There was people embedded in those protests. They were trained. I have military experience. I saw crews of three and four with umbrellas to block vision. I saw crews of three and four determined to do property damage. It starts peaceful when I saw and observed and I caught on my camera and video. The majority did not have any respect for property. They had no respect for authority. They had no respect for me as a citizen. Once they realized, because I was minority, they assumed I was part of them. Once they realized I was recording them, they turned against me and assaulted me and knocked me to the ground trying to get my camera. I turned that video and camera over to the law enforcement so they could pinpoint people who were defacing, damaging, smashing property. And they came prepared. They came prepared with sledgehammers and some kind of devices that were designed to break the plastic glass at the county attorney. They came prepared. Now, there might have been people who were there who were peaceful, had good heart, but some of these people came from out of town. I talked to them and they talked to me freely because being a minority man, they assumed I was part of them. The law enforcement, if they escalate their equipment, the need is because the public citizens are no longer citizens. They're thugs, they're terrorists, they're dangerous, and they could cause harm. So the law enforcement has all the right to protect themselves. And this lady who said having the law enforcement have military hardware leaves a bad taste in her mouth. Blood leaves a bad taste in a policeman's mouth when they fill stuff like bottles and rocks. And these guys are, these guys are trained, they're equipped, they come prepared, they come in teams. So your average citizen, they blend in with the average citizen. And I just want to say, the police, the law enforcement, if they escalate their protective gear, it's because the public has escalated their violence and their animosity and their hatred towards law enforcement, which is designed to protect them. They need to check themselves. I saw it on a video, and I just want to support the law enforcement and people who are so hateful of the police need to stop and take a look at themselves. They're the violent ones. Thank you very much. I try to keep it in three minutes.
You did. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for calling. Okay, next caller.
That concludes your public comments. I'm going to close the queue now.
Okay. Thank you, Flo. Okay, that is our public comment on item four. So opportunity for board members weigh in. I have Supervisor Cerna in the queue.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Another hour's late, so I'll try and be brief. So understanding that we do have some time before we need to act, I would like to put out for consideration, trying to acquire some more information that's not presented in, at least I didn't see it in the inventory. And I suspect that the construct of the inventory is really guided by the statute in terms of its, the way the content is presented. But I also, unless I'm counseled otherwise by our attorney, that's a, that's a floor, that's not a ceiling. So we could ask for more detailed information, could we not? That helps inform a decision, I assume?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And can I just add one thing? Because I think I know where this may be going. If you do...
You've said this for a long time, huh?
If you, I mean, it sounds like there may be concerns with specific types of equipment because basically the law says for all of the listed equipment, you have to go basically one by one. I mean, not really, but you should go one by one and it has to meet certain criteria in order for it to be approved. And that's in, let's see, 7071 subdivision D. You have to make sure that each piece of equipment meets four different standards in order to have it approved. So if there is the will of the board not to approve certain pieces of equipment, it would have to be analyzed under that subsection in order for it not to be approved. Does that make sense?
Sort of.
It's kind of a double negative. 7071 D1, and then A, B, C, D.
So let me, let me complete my thought and then you tell me whether or not it comports with what you just mentioned. So the, the information that I'm interested in, given the nature of the, some of the back and forth with the captain earlier and understanding from the department's perspective what is necessary. I would like to know how the equipment that's in the inventory, how much it's been used, if at all, in the past. I think that is something that really comes from the limited discussion tonight on the 50 caliber high-velocity rifle. There may be other pieces of equipment. I mean, the dumpster, back and forth is what, dumpster, dump truck, question and answers also kind of contribute to that inquiry generally for the entire list. I'd also like to understand which pieces of equipment are directly related to de-escalation because there's been liberal mention of de-escalation tonight. And also which pieces of equipment are really designed and acquired to replace what would otherwise be deployed as lethal equipment. So for instance, just as a layperson here, not someone with a great deal of law enforcement background or munitions knowledge, beanbag shotguns, are they basically a substitute in certain circumstances for what would otherwise be a live shotgun round? And so I'd like to kind of understand the nature of which, you know, what opportunities or decisions are made about the deployment of each lethal and non-lethal and how that relates to the inventory. These are some of the questions that I think would better inform, the answers to these questions would better inform the board about what we might conclude as kind of a reasonable list of equipment that attempts to balance necessity with certainly, you know, protecting the men and women of the Sheriff's Department. I think that's not lost on me at all. The last thing I would want to do is, you know, have, make it, be part of a decision that restricts or makes unavailable any piece of equipment that might lead to injury or, you know, kind of a bidding death of a peace officer because they didn't have a particular piece of equipment. So I'm, that's kind of my thinking right now is I want to have a little bit more information and discussion about those kind of, those three aspects of what we're being asked to consider before making a final decision.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Supervisor Cerna. Okay, Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Frost, both in the queue.
Thank you, and I agree. We do have time. I will tell you that if I was forced to make a decision tonight, it would be no because I'm just not prepared for one thing and also because I think that the inventory list is too broad and far-reaching. I mean, I hate to use the two examples, but it's a good example. We have a 50 caliber rifle next to a five-ton dump truck for flood purposes. That's a strange decision to have to be making and it's not entirely logical to me. I know that Mr. Jones said that, you know, this is not militarization of the Sheriff's Department, but I kind of disagree there with some of these weapons and, you know, I could be educated differently, but at this point, I do feel like this is over-militarization of the Sheriff's Department. Like Supervisor Cerna, the last thing I want to do, though, is make a decision that puts deputies at risk or the public at risk. So I would need a greater explanation of what this equipment is, what it does. I read the inventory list cover to cover. I got that, but there are more, you know, policies of, you know, when are they used? What's, you know, what are lethal use policies to use these type of equipment? And also, just to be crystal clear here from counsel, it sounds like as a board working with people who have more expertise in the subject than we do, we could go page by page on that thing.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to put a finer point on the question by Supervisor Cerna and your point, when we come back or maybe in preparation, the Sheriff's Department would want to concentrate on the language of the statute that I mentioned because...
Yeah.
Basically, to both of your points, the, one of the findings is that the military equipment is necessary because there's no reasonable alternative that can achieve the same objective of officer or civilian safety. And then also that the proposed use of the equipment will safeguard the public welfare, safety, civil rights, civil liberties. Those are the two big ones. So I think it would, it would be very helpful to the board to have information based on that lens versus anything else.
You used the exact word I was going to use, lens. That's exactly, I would like this to be analyzed under that lens. And, you know, I mean, I'm Iraqing this now, Lisa. And, but I just, I need more information. I don't think that I agree that the entire package needs to be approved, but I can't say that definitively now because I just need more information. So I tend to be pretty much where Supervisor Cerna is on this one at this point.
Okay. Just before I go, Supervisor Frost, I just wanted to ask to the last point that you made, Lisa. It seemed to me that some assistance from, and I, obviously with Eric Jones here and obviously your understanding of statute, and I know the Sheriff's Department obviously has counsel and certainly have the expertise in their special enforcement detail. I, I don't know, maybe something, again, maybe Eric, you could speak up or Lisa, if you were tasked with, you know, being participatory in that role in some of that, you know, evaluation. Obviously, Sheriff's Department will have their own evaluation. They provided some of that to the degree they could this evening, but I'm curious, is that appropriate to ask the two of you? We don't have an inspector general. This really isn't, I wouldn't necessarily fall in that category, but we're, have a vacancy there. So I guess I'm wondering, and working in concert with your expertise, certainly yours from a legal standpoint, counsel for Sheriff's Department, and then obviously we as laypeople, but certainly as representatives, having to make some decision as the legislation points out. And I think questions that have been asked, and I want to give Supervisor Frost the chance. I just want to understand, is it appropriate to us for the task, you folks with that?
As far as from county council's perspective, I do believe that Jim Wood, who works with the Sheriff's Department on some legal issues, not all, was at least informed and maybe contributed to some of the information provided. I don't know exactly, but he was aware of the approach, but I could certainly have him be involved in assisting the sheriff, Sheriff's Office in concert with their actual attorney that they have in-house if that's...
Yeah, I think assisting us with the analysis as well. I mean, again, you know, because, again, they've given us their take on this and I respect that, but I think that as we're trying to get some additional review, recognizing this is the first time we've had this, you know, on our plate, so.
I mean, it would definitely behoove the Sheriff's Department to have, take it through the lens that you're asking because it would make them maybe get some of these pieces of equipment approved, so.
Okay. All right, thanks. Eric, did you want to respond? I want to go to...
Can I weigh in on that?
Sure.
So I'm not sure that it's appropriate for Eric to weigh in. He doesn't know the Sheriff's Department. He doesn't know the kinds of things they're faced with. He's new to this community. I think it would be more appropriate for the Sheriff's Department to look at that inventory with the lens that you're speaking of. And certainly, they could reach out, consult with Mr. Jones if they felt the need to do so, but I think it's more appropriate for the Sheriff's Department to do that, knowing what, since they know what their needs are.
Okay.
I mean, I have the same, not the same comment, but obviously, we're not going to insert ourselves if the Sheriff's Department does not want us to be, but we are willing and able to assist if needed.
Well, and again, my point in just raising the issue, though, is that we're, the five of us are asked to make some decisions on this. Again, you know, I'm ripe from the get-go. I don't claim any expertise in any of those areas. I'd be able to drive a Hummer, but beyond that, I don't, you know, it's, again, so, but I'm not pleading ignorance because again, I understand, you know, the force that can be, you know, behind some of this equipment. It's explained in the report here and so forth. But as we're talking through from a policy perspective and, you know, equipment that we currently have on hand and that we might or might not receive in the future, I just think it's important that we can make an informed decision as a board, hearing certainly from the Sheriff's Department, from others. So again, I'm just looking for some assistance, but Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Cerna, both are in the queue, so Supervisor Frost.
Yeah, I, my understanding when I came here tonight was that we were just approving, you know, it's like they're reporting the list of equipment that they have, but this is us approving the equipment and under the criteria indicated. is us approving the equipment and under the criteria indicated. And so I feel the same way, but I have a couple of questions I have, and I don't know if you can speak to it tonight, about the microwave, the LRAD long-range acoustic device and the microwave weapons. Do we have, this is on your list, and what situation would you use those weapons that you couldn't use it somewhere else, that there's no other alternative? I've read articles about these new microwave weapons, so, and they, they do look kind of scary. They stop you in your tracks, basically.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. As far as microwave weapons, I'm not certain that we have any of those. We do have the long-range acoustical devices. We have two of them mounted on top of Folsom Dam, and then we use portable units for basically directed public announcements, where we used to use, if you can envision an old bullhorn, now we have the capability to direct negotiations in a critical incident. We use them for that purpose, and generally, that's when we cannot establish communication with a wanted subject inside of a residence by utilizing a phone, a cellphone, or even some of the throw phones that we employ. So these, these are strictly PAs times five, if you will.
Okay, so those are not the EMS weapons, the new EMS weapons that we're reading about, microwave weapons?
We do not have any of those, ma'am.
Okay, but it lists Taser Shockwave microwave weapons on your, on your list here?
Under our inventory?
Uh, yes.
What page are you on, Sue?
Um, page four, page three. It's on attachment, military equipment inventory, attachment three, page three. Or page, yeah.
Page three I have is the
It's at the bottom, it's the second to last page on the bottom.
Starting at page 69, ma'am.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's in the index. I'm, I'm just looking at the index. I didn't look at the, this just has the index.
I'm, okay, I got it.
I'm just looking at the index.
So the index was for purposes of everything that's listed in AB 481. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have all of this equipment. So if you forward to page 69 of, of our military equipment inventory that we've published online, you'll see the equipment that we actually have in our possession, and microwave devices is not listed under that equipment.
Okay, so that could be the misunderstanding in public comment around the
Yes, I did hear several instances of the apparent misunderstanding of what we actually have in our possession.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Well, what would you use something like that for, if you did have it?
I am not familiar with that equipment, so I can't
It's fairly new, I think.
the implications of, of what it is used for, so.
I think you'd make popcorn with it.
I'm asking a serious question. It is a real weapon, so, okay.
I'm not familiar with what use it's being employed, so.
Okay.
And just to that point, though, we could say, we don't want you to ever have that equipment. I mean, you don't have it, and you haven't requested it, and I think to the point, your policy could, could embody that if that ever became available and there was some interest, it's still in purview of this board, as I understand it. Now or in the future, say, we don't want you to have that piece of equipment, whatever that looks like, however that's functional, so, and you don't have it. So I, but I think that's part of the discussion, I think it just rolls itself out. That's kind of looking forward, again, not to hamstring law enforcement, on the other hand, to recognize that there are many things that, you know, have utility on the battlefield, but don't have utility, you know, in our civilian peacekeeping.
Yeah, I'm curious how we, how we can pick and choose and make decisions about the sheriff's operations. I thought we did not have purview over the sheriff's operations. We were just part of managing the budget, so.
AB 481, which is the law that requires this hearing that we're having tonight, gives the board, the, requires the board to do this.
Yeah, I wonder about that. I wonder if it's constitutional to, to reach into the sheriff's operations like that.
Well, the
That's a question that I have.
The assets, though, belong to the county.
Right.
They're under the command and control of the sheriff's department, but they're still county assets, which still come under our overall authorities. They don't just purchase and/or acquire equipment just because. I mean, the sheriff has certain authorities, but as the other department has, but those are still county assets, Sue. So I would think that we, even maybe prior to this, maybe they didn't get the scrutiny, but we still have the ability. I remember a couple of years ago, there was this board that, when that last bear cat was received, it wasn't a unanimous vote on the board. And so there's been some policy precedent previously, but it probably puts us further into the detail than before.
No difference in a patrol, a patrol car.
Yeah.
Patrol vehicle.
Yeah, but fair question. Okay, Sue, anything else?
All right, that's it.
Okay, Supervisor Cerna.
Great, thank you, Ms. Chair. I just want to point out, too, that I think this is a decision that should happen with all five of us here, and with Mr. Desmond missing tonight, quite frankly, I don't think we have the unique benefit of having a supervisor that serves up here with us, who actually has law enforcement background to perhaps provide some valuable insights about some of the utility of some of the equipment that we've been discussing, and maybe even some of his, you know, career experience with some of it. And I think we could all benefit from having a discussion with, with all of us here, but in particular, having Supervisor Desmond active in that conversation.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Then I think we've had the presentation, I want to certainly thank everyone who's weighed in, and certainly the preparation went into the report, and I guess I would turn to you, because again, I trust that with the work that's been requested here, that it's going to take at least several weeks, and again, I know our calendar's getting full, and again, this is the second evening now we've been in past 10 o'clock, which is fine. And again, that's, I think we're accommodating the public, and certainly it's tough on folks who may have had an early shift today. But I do think that this is an item that we're going to want to have certainly five board members, if we can plan on that, and give ample time for the public to have access to the information, certainly for the sheriff and others to prepare, to respond to the questions, and then have it for our deliberation. We have this window of 180 days from May 1st.
Correct.
So what would be the, that very outside date?
December 1st, I think. I don't, I, May 5th to, November 1st.
November 1st.
Yeah, so it could definitely be after the recess.
Yeah, so, so there's some time, again, but I think we want to allow ample time, recognizing there could be, very well be differences here, and we're going to have to make some, some decisions at some point, so.
Ms. Chair, too, if I could, it also gives the sheriff's department, whether it's the captain who we heard from today or others, to make arrangements to meet one-on-one with individual board members to have those conversations, too, in advance of a, of a hearing.
And I know the offer is to do that, I think, and it was, this showed up pretty quickly, but, and any recommendations as to where we might continue to
I would suggest after the break, after the summer recess.
Okay, so maybe
In July.
Yeah, maybe give the clerk and the county executive time to figure out which dates work.
Okay.
And meanwhile, obviously, they'll be working, the sheriff's department can work on the questions answered today or asked today.
And so, and this, obviously, wouldn't, yesterday was on the consent calendar.
Right.
It's, it's no longer consent calendar item, so it would be a separate matter, and I think it was useful discussion this evening, so we will look to midsummer for a revisiting of this, and hopefully have ample time for everybody to prepare for the next time we hear this. So again, thanks to all of our callers, thanks to our sheriff's personnel, and to folks in chambers this evening for your comments. So do we, do we need a motion to continue this, or just?
Yes.
I'll move that, move that we continue this to a date uncertain yet in the midsummer.
Okay, all right. We have a motion in a second. Clerk's okay with that, I'm sure.
Who seconded? I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Kennedy, he's so quiet over there.
All right, move to continue to a date uncertain, but sometime this summer, all right.
That's duly noted.
Please vote.
Harmonious vote with those members present.
Okay, thank you all, and that concludes the business. We do have an adjournment this evening, and let's go to our announcements first, so.
I have a question for the captain.
Ryan.
If you have a question, you can answer.
Okay, well, okay. Ryan. Okay, Ryan, we have an opportunity, we're just going to come back before the board. You can pose your question, you can, you know, send an email to the sheriff's department, and
I was just going to ask you guys to uphold what you said.
Okay, all right. Well, we're going to be back, this, this item wasn't settled this evening, it's coming back, Ryan, it's coming back to the board in July, so, okay, thank you.
Are you okay with requesting for weapons?
Ryan, please. Okay.
I don't have any further comments, thank you.
All right. Okay, members of the board, I know we have an adjournment, any, any other announcements?
Yeah.
Yeah, Supervisor Kennedy.
Just one question for the chair, I, I may have missed this, but
Yeah.
you, you brought up the inspector general. At some point, could we get a, just an update on where we're at on that?
Yes, we are out for, the recruitment firm has been selected. I actually have a meeting tomorrow at 4 o'clock with our human resources staff, and to get a schedule. Again, I'm, you know, very intent on trying to get that back before our board, and I don't, and you may be able to, to help, but I know we, I've seen recruitment brochure, and I believe is prepared for circulation to
Yes, it's, it's, my understanding is that the first week of May, it will go out.
Yeah, right. And so we'll share, it's a timely, timely question, Supervisor Kennedy, and so I think once we've had a chance to iron out the details, at least the, the schedule, we can share that with, with board members, to let them know.
Great, thank you.
Okay, good. All right. Okay, other announcements, then Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair, and totally. This evening, I unfortunately have a close in memory of one of our valued veterans in Sacramento County, Glenn O. Wilson. Glenn O. Wilson, U.S. Air Force retired, was born March 31, 1937, reported to God April 9, 2022. He is survived by his life partner, Betty Wilson, his children, 11 grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. Glenn enlisted into the U.S. Army Reserve in 1953, and then re-enlisted into the U.S. Air Force in 1955. His MOS military occupation skill was radar technician. Glenn flew on various missions from a variety of duty stations. Osan Air Force Base, Korea, Japan, Austin, Texas, Andrews Air Force Base, Washington, DC, Mather Air Force Base, Sacramento. Glenn served tour of duty in Vietnam, 1967 to 1968, at Toi Hoya, pronounced Toy Wassa, and he retired from the United States Air Force in 1975. After his service to our nation, he established a tax consulting business until 2016. Glenn was also employed in 1977 at the Sacramento Army Depot until his retirement, again, in 1996. Glenn was a veteran, Veterans Veteran. He was an advocate, well-respected VSO, Veterans Service Organizations statesman. He held numerous executive staff positions and was a member of various Veterans Service Organizations, Disabled American Veterans, American Legion, VFW Cooties, that met in VFW Post 4647, and served as VFW District 17 Post Commander. Glenn was presented with the Congressional Service Award and Bronze Star Medal, the George Watches in a Freedom Medal, and many others. Glenn Wilson had diplomatic skills of Prime Minister Disraeli, a command presence, a well-earned deep respect and admiration from veterans who had the fortune to work with him. Glenn's demeanor and persona could be described as Jimmy Stewart style. He was quite humble, confident, had a claiming effect to those not grounded. His downrange vision was extraordinary to those who knew him. Sacramento County area veterans community will feel the absence of his, this humble citizen and gentleman patriot. We send our prayers to his nuclear family as Glenn Wilson renders his final salute to all of us and reports to his final station in heaven. God bless America, God bless Glenn, God bless all the veterans who carry on his mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, and again, we give our heartfelt condolences to Betty, and to, as Supervisor Frost noted, to the Wilson family, and we certainly acknowledge and commemorate him this evening in our adjournment in honor of Glenn Wilson. If there's anything else coming for the board, we will stand in adjournment and have a safe travel home this evening. [applause]